You arrive.
Vice Chairman Frichat, I texted the chairman to see if he was having any technical issues getting in. I spoke with him earlier today, so he should be joining, but if he doesn't join in maybe in the next few minutes. Oh, I think I hear his voice.
Hello? Hello?
Tom, I can hear you loud and clear.
Logging in. Give me a second, okay?
Absolutely.
On my computer. I'm hitting the Zoom link and looking for you.
I'll resend it to you, maybe that'll help it work one second.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Tom, I was just getting warmed up in the bullpen.
No, I went on about 10 minutes ago and I'm hitting the link for the Zoom and nothing's popping up on me. So I just figured I'd call in and use the number, but yeah. I keep hitting, hitting the link and nothing happened.
Are you doing the link, Tom, from the, because the agenda went out for the September 10th meeting? I'm wondering if that, because they have a different.
No, I'm on, I'm on a.
The third, okay.
I'm on tonight, yeah.
Fair enough.
The one from Jared, yep. Yeah. Jared's gonna send me the new one, so.
I just sent it to you, Tom, and I'll let you know that all the other members of the board are on as well.
Okay.
So if you'd like, we could get started and hopefully that you're able to, that link works.
All right, yeah, I can't. So you're sending me new mail, let me see if I got it yet? Yep, I got it. Okay, let me try it again. Okay. Oh, there we go.
Tom, I see it coming in, so hopefully that means that the technical issue is resolved.
Let me just check. Okay, I think we're all set.
That was just the echo from your phone since you're affecting the computer as well, so I just muted your phone.
Okay, I think there we go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the planning board meeting for September 3rd, 2020. And the first matter on the agenda is the approval for the August 17th, 2020 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, do we have the motions made? Do we have a second?
This is member Chang with second emotion.
Okay, we have a motion made, second, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All board members? Vote in favor, just say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, chi avocius, that matter is approved. Moving along on the agenda. We have a continuation from a site plan review and a special permit for 1201 Westford Street, Full Harvest Moon. Think Inc. Seeking Site Plan Review and Special Permit Approval to Open a Recreational Marijuana Dispensary at the above address. The property is located in the off this park zoning district and this requires site plan review approval under section 11.42 and special permit approval under 11.40 and any relief as required by the law zoning ordinance. This matter was a continuation from a prior meeting, therefore we'll pick up where we left off. We don't have to start from the very beginning, it's not a makeup. Continuation, so it's not like a baseball game where we get made up and start over again. This is where we pick up from where we left off. I know at the last meeting, the applicant had people speak for well over half an hour, so all that stuff is already in the record. There are a lot of concerns that went, concern last time was the parking and the traffic. So tonight I'd like to try to pick up where we left off and not start at the beginning. Saying that, we'll turn it over at this point to the applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant. I want to thank you very much for opening this matter up as a special meeting to hear us. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to clear up all the questions. When, when that meeting ended last time, there were a number of issues that were brought forward and a number of questions presented. So we want to go ahead and clear those up. So with us tonight is going to be again Janet Cooper, who's the COO, Michaela Restuccia, who's the president of this all female led company, Matt Hammer, the engineer, Mike Allen, head of security, the architect, John Caveney, and the traffic engineer, Ken Cram. I do want to touch upon one thing that we did have a submission of a, of a response that was sent in from Princeton Properties from VAI Associates with respect to the traffic, which was sent in yesterday afternoon. It was a late submission. We submitted all our materials on this and updating all this on August 12th. So it was a sufficient period of time to respond to this. Nevertheless, it was responded to last night, staff was able to respond to it. We did get comments from Natasha Vance, the traffic engineer, which will be responded to as well. I want to point out one element in the report is that they're talking about the difficulty in impeding Trinity ambulance to respond for the use of Carl Street. They respond to that directly in this report. I ask that that be stricken. Trinity ambulance has not provided any information or opposition to this. They've not responded one bit opposing this matter. They're our neighbor next door and they're our neighbor in the building as well. They, they have not come forward and said anything with respect, with respect to impeding their ability to get up and down Carl Street. That's an inference that's drawn here and it's wrong. What I'd like to do, there was a number of issues that went through last time that talked about tenancies, a lot of confusion with respect to why we're occupying all this space. The first floor of four, which contains 4,030 square feet. You will see the layout of the property again, but we have to occupy the entire first floor from the entrance to the exit, from the entrance on the Westford Street side to the exit on the Carl Street side. It has to be a contiguous use of the space for security reasons. We can't have common hallways, we can't have other tenants on the floor. We could operate with much, with much less space, but we need to occupy that space for security purposes. As a result, we have an entry that's 434 square feet, a reception area of 81 square feet, a point of sale of 261 square feet. The actual dispensary is 1451 and the exit vestibule is 73 square feet, which makes for 2,300 square feet. It was an issue with respect to how many employees are going to be there, but we'll have 15 to 20 employees. But only seven to 10 will be on the premises at any one time with our operating hours being 10 to 8 Sunday through Saturday. Parking, so a lot of confusion that came through with respect to the parking and the tenancy. We have a parking lot that contains 51 parking spaces. We have 15 of those spaces are committed to Trinity ambulance, who is a tenant on the second floor. When you have an additional, Broderick Law Firm will be occupying a portion of the second floor as well. They'll be occupying 400, 826 square feet. They will be required to have four parking spaces under, I'm sorry, three parking spaces under zoning. One space for every 400 square feet. Trinity ambulance and Kevin Broderick Law Office will be occupying the entire second floor. We will be occupying the entire first floor, which consists of 4,030 square feet. And we are required to have nine spaces under zoning, which requires one space for every 500 square feet. So that is nine spaces. However, if you take the 51 spaces minus the 15 that Trinity ambulance has, minus the, the, the three spaces or Broderick Law Office, then you take the six spaces that are currently leased to Princeton Properties, which they will lose. Those will be leased to Full Harvest Moons. We have 33 spaces onsite that are there for our customers. In addition to that, we provided information to you with respect to an offsite parking agreement for 15 parking spaces for the property across the street on Carl Street, directly across the rear of the building for 15 spaces, which are going to be dedicated for employees. We have an agreement, it's in writing, you have a copy of that, so there is no confusion with respect to that. When you add up all those spaces, we have a total of 48 space. We have more parking that's required, we're overparked. We will not have an issue with parking and specifically, we won't have an issue with impacting what was alleged before of impacting parking on Carl Street. There's an issue with Carl Street and that's not going to be created by Full Harvest Moons occupying this building from their customers or any other tenants in the building. There are hundreds of apartments in this area and the office park area that are preexisting that are there that are owned by Princeton Property. I would assert to you that it is their, their tenants and guests of tenants that are impacting Carl Street. We've taken measures by, with great expense, to go ahead and pay for additional parking spaces on the other side of Carl Street to mediate and to mitigate this problem. Now, I want to explain to you the tendencies there. We have a letter from the landlord that explains the current tendencies and what will happen after Full Harvest Moon's occupying the premise. You have the letter, which is signed by the owner, that describes that when Full Harvest Moon occupies this premises and is fully permitted, they will occupy the entire first floor. The basement, which is currently occupied by La Surratt Stepping Out Dance Studio, which is owned by George La Surratt, their lease will not be renewed in February of 2021. That space in the basement will remain vacant with an agreement we have with the landlord. So there can be no further tenancies with respect to the basement, there can be no further impact to parking in this parking lot. It will be a static situation where we will continue to have 33 spaces in the parking lot and 15 spaces across the street. Broderick Law Firm will be moved from the second, from the first floor to the second floor and they will occupy the space with Trinity ambulance. Currently on the first floor, there's a tenant work opportunities and on the second floor, there's an attorney, Gaffow. They are tenants at will and they, when Full Harvest Moon occupies the building, they will be asked to move. We can't have additional tenants on the first floor. So as a result, the end result will be Full Harvest Moon's 4,030 square feet in the first floor, Trinity ambulance, 2639 usable space on the second floor and Broderick Law Firm also on the second floor. And the parking will consist of 33 spaces for Full Harvest Moon's, 15 spaces for Trinity ambulance and three spaces for Broderick Law Firm. Princeton Properties will lose the six spaces that are there with an agreement that we have with the landlord, which is evidenced by a, a signed letter from the landlord. I also want to point out something else here that we all know that we have been at this process for two years. Two years when we made our application, two years from the time before that, when the citizens of Lowell approved overwhelmingly the, the retail dispensaries for the sale of marijuana. And this, and the Department of Planning and Development and the administration did a tremendous job in spacing zones out throughout the city of where these, these, these dispensaries can operate. They, they have approved out of 10 that have applied for or approved that were carefully vetted by the administration, vetted for their ability to finance, vetted by their professionalism and by their ability to operate. Full Harvest Moon's, just to, to, to show how competent they are, all already have an operation in Haverhill, which they've been improved that they're building out right now. We are located on 1201 Westford Street, basically near the Chamsford line. The other location that was approved is on the other side of the city at, on Rochester Street. Another location that was approved was on Chamsford Street and the fourth location that was approved is on Bridge Street in Centerville. There was a previously grandfathered location of, on industrial ass. So these are spread out throughout the city and as Ken Cram will, will discuss a little later on, that there are going to be 14 working dispensaries in this area. There's going to be two in Tingsborough, another two or three in Drake, that's going to be the other, the other four that are going to be operating in Lowell. There's not going to be this tremendous impact with people rushing here for, to these dispensaries. But what is significant about everything is that they have the ability to generate to the city the amount of $500,000 per year from their 3% gross revenue. As a result of that, and I rarely put it in economic terms when, for the board for a site plan review or a special permit, because the purview of the board is taking every application on its own merits individually and dealing with traffic, safety and all those other issues, it's not just one issue. That's why we've gone ahead and improved this application by taking parking, the parking issue off the table at our additional expense. But at the same time, we're in a brave new world as far as this economy is concerned. There are very few opportunities for a municipality to go find any new sources of revenue. There's going to be little or no development. We have no idea what's going to happen down the road in this economy and where cities are going to be stressed for their resources to support vital services that they need to support for the police, for the fire, for education. When you have $500,000 a year interjected into the city, you're saving jobs. And I really want you to consider that because the opponent here, who's our director butter, by, by, by having this, 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 taking this position against the shoes here that has this amount of a revenue force to help the city is really doing a public disservice.
George, this is Chanel, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to clarify the, the, it's 3% per the host community agreement, 3% in an excise tax, excise tax for a total of 6% of gross revenue.
6%. Right. So that's going, that's going 6% revenue to the city, so I want, I want, I want you to consider that. So at this point in time, briefly, I just want John Caveney to show the space of the building so there's no confusion of who occupies what space and how it's going to be occupied when we go ahead and, and if we are getting approval, how we're going to occupy this space.
Okay. So John, if you want to do that, put that up.
Definitely, John Caveney, CAC, we're based in Lowell as well. I'm going to pull up my screen right here, one second. Can everyone see this? Um, so as George said, all I want to do is briefly go through the floor plan so we can really hit on the layout and customer flow and why it's really imperative for Full Harvest Moon's to take up the entire first floor from both a security standpoint and an operational standpoint. So what we have here is some interior renderings, which you guys saw the fly through last time, but really the goal here is basically putting into action what Full Harvest Moon's has been able to do at their other dispensary that they've built in Haverhill. So we, these are realistic depictions of what we're planning in the space. The layout itself, as, as George mentioned, we're maintaining the existing entrance and exit points of the building. So the entrance on the south side, exit on the north side. For both customer flow and security, we have a large waiting area that's 434 square feet, which would allow for over 30 customers queuing. You will check in with reception and then you're on the dispensary floor, which is 1451 square feet and would allow for over 66 customers queuing. The intent in that is making sure all queuing is happening inside versus outside. There's seven point of sale stations and then we also maintain an exit vestibule for security reasons and out the other side. The entire front of the space takes up 2,300 square feet, so that's the dispensary itself. And then the back of house, on the backside of the building, that's 1730 usable square feet, as George mentioned. I do just want to stress why it was imperative for Full Harvest Moon's to take the entire first floor. From an operational and security perspective, it is a requirement for the uses program that we maintain the separate exit and entrance points to limit co-mingling. Full Harvest Moon's does require a large waiting area and dispensary floor to limit how many people are queuing outside, as discussed. We want all queuing to happen inside. From a security perspective, Full Harvest Moon's did not want additional tenants on the same floor. We also believe this is what's best for the current tenants of the building, Broderick Law and Trinity ambulance. And then also by ensuring no tenants occupy the basement now and in the future, we mitigate any potential parking issues in the future. And then this diagram right here, which you guys all have, but this is new material that we compiled and really we, we created this diagram to make it easy to understand all the tenants of the property and the uses that they take. As mentioned, in the middle here, Full Harvest Moon's is occupying the entire first floor outside of two common stairwells that are used by the upstairs occupancies to get to their space. We have agreements with the owner, the basement down here will have no tenancy whatsoever now and in the future. And then the second floor, top floor up here is occupied by Trinity EMS at 2,639 usable square feet and Broderick Law, 826 usable square feet. And as you can see by the red, which is Trinity, and then the blue, which is Broderick, all the gray here is common space, including common hallway, common toilets, common utilities and stairwells. They cannot be occupied by future tenants at all in the future, so basically the upstairs is what it is. So I think our goal with this diagram was just making it easy to understand the tenancies of this property. And with that, I'll, I'll give it back to George.
Thank you, John. I would just like Mike Allen, who's our security chief, to just discuss the, the deliveries. The, also briefly touch upon the odor control plan as well. Mike?
Sure, thank you, George, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Deliveries was an issue that, that came up from the last meeting, that, that there was some information that you wanted us to provide on how that was going to take place and where it was going to take place. So I, I will point out that we did cover the process for deliveries in the security plan that was submitted to the Lowell Police Department and reviewed by Deputy Superintendent Barry Golner. And that, that really was part of the review for the security plan of which you, I know the board has a letter that indicates their review and, and of the security plan of having no issues whatsoever with anything that was contained in the plan. But to explain the delivery process, John, can you advance the slide to the site plan, the slide presentation? Right here, if, if you could zoom in on that a little bit, I would point to the area which is lined off, not a, not a parking space, but lined off. As you come in the entrance off of Westford Street, you'll see that line, that first lined off area there. That'll be the area where the delivery vehicle pulls into and parks to, to unload the, the product. So I will point out that deliveries are made during daylight hours. They're, they're randomized, so their time of the day, the day of the week is randomized per CCC regulation. The type of delivery vehicle that will be coming onsite is a Ford Transit style vehicle. So it's really a delivery van, very easy to maneuver within that parking lot and, and will not block any access as it, as it parks in that area. The, the two agents will unload the product from the vehicle, it's, the, the product itself is in locked containers and, and the product is delivered and sealed, hermetically sealed, tamper resistant, opaque packaging. The vehicle itself has no markings on it, so the, the, the general public would not be able to identify it as a, as a delivery vehicle. It doesn't have Harvest Moon insignias on the side, there's no windows on the vehicle so that you could see inside. So the delivery process itself will, will happen twice a week is what we're, we're projecting. And the, the agents, once they bring the product inside and secure it in the. And, um, the, the agents, um, once they bring the product inside and secure it in the vault. With the, uh, security officers that are on site, who by the way, will do a sweep. Of the entire here, uh, perimeter of the building prior to the delivery vehicle arriving. Uh, any, any suspicious activity whatsoever would be reported to Lowell PD. And the delivery would be aborted if that were to ever occur. And obviously, uh, as I mentioned in the last meeting that we had, we have, um. Video surveillance on site in real time, uh, that, that the Lowell Police Department would be able to connect into and watch that delivery take place. Without ever having to, to actually be, be at the site. So, uh, many, um, the, the safeguards in place to have the delivery go through that front entrance are. Uh, really best practices from our crime prevention, environmental design standpoint. And, um, that will essentially, uh, cover how the, how the deliveries are made. Total time that that delivery vehicle be on site will probably be ten minutes or so. In terms of the odor control that ties into this, because, um, I know that was brought up as well. We did supply a policy that, um, Full Harvest Moon has on odor mitigation. There really is no odor to mitigate in these facilities. I have, I've been involved in, in multiple dispensaries throughout the state. The, the product that gets delivered, that will be delivered here is in sealed packaging, hermetically sealed packaging. Um, that, that there is no odor within the facility or, or coming through our ventilation system outside the facility. So, uh, you can rest assured that, 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 that is the reason for that. And, and that's how we mitigate odor in a, in a retail dispensary environment. No packaging, it's done on site. Everything is prepackaged coming to our facility. Uh, and I believe that covers that issue. George, I'll turn it back over to you unless there are any questions on that.
Um, I think, uh, what I'd like to, uh, have Matt Hammer just briefly go through that site plan again. Point out our, uh, point out the, uh, the, uh, storm water mitigation system that we have, uh, the, uh. And just briefly describe the site, Matt. Matt, are you there?
Oh, sorry, I had the mute button on. Matt Hammer, um, Landplex Engineering and Surveying, uh, ten George Street, Lowell. So working with the, um, the city's stormwater team that they put together. Uh, we were able to come up with a mitigation for the current runoff. That extends to the easterly side of the parking area. Uh, so we have a two by two foot infiltration trench along the entire easterly side of the parking area. As well as, uh, at the low point, um, for the runoff that's at the center median of the two curb cuts that come off of Carl Street. Uh, with that, um, we also identified, um, that the roof drains themselves also, uh, terminate into the ground. So there's some dry wells within the ground to also mitigate, uh, surface runoff from the rooftops. Additionally, uh, we also, um, have fenced in the dumpster area. I know that's a, um, a goal we're always trying to achieve. So we've done that to the dumpster area where there's a loading area. For that dumpster off of the, uh, westerly side of the, um, crosshatched area coming off of Carl Street. And that's essentially the summary of the mitigation that we've done for stormwater. I can put it back to you, George.
Thank you, Matt. At this time, I, I'd like to have Ken Graham of A-side Engineering. He is going to answer the, uh, the requests and the comments that were, uh, uh, requested by, uh, the city traffic engineer. So, uh, Ken, can we hear from you?
Yes, can everyone hear me? Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
No one's responding, so.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, I, my intention is to respond to Natasha Vance's comments, uh, initially. Uh, and then I will respond to the written comments that we received from, uh, Van Assen Associates. And then, um, wrap up with, uh, a roundup of the. Uh, express comment responses that we received in the past forty-eight hours. Uh, so initially, um. Natasha's, uh, first comment was she confirmed, uh, our traffic counts are good. Uh, they were done before COVID. Um, so there's no need to worry about that. Uh, the second comment, uh, which, uh, George has already clearly, uh, identified was the project tenancy of what the building is. Um, the actual sales floor area is fourteen hundred and fifty-one square feet. Um, but the numbers we've used in our analyses, uh, we use the. Go to the next slide, the generation slide, please. Or, yeah, there we go. Uh, the total area that encompasses what is used for the retail sales is approximately twenty-three hundred square feet. Um, and so we use the data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, tenth edition. To generate the trips for the dispensary. Um, and as it's shown here, um, upwards of between five hundred and eighty and six hundred daily trips are expected. On a weekday and on a Saturday with anywhere from twenty-four to eighty-four trips, uh, during the respective peak hours. Now, these, this data is based on the ITE, um, trip generation manual. Um, however, as George indicated earlier, uh, our hours are from ten AM to eight PM, seven days a week. Um, so we will not have any traffic generation during the morning peak hour. Um, but we analyzed it just the same. We analyzed, uh, the weekday morning peak hour of the generator, which is higher than. What the, uh, weekday morning peak hour or what is commonly known as the commuter peak hour would have been. So, uh, and I just want to point out, we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, what, you know, this is the trade area, uh, that we showed the last time. And these are all either existing dispensaries, the green dots are stores that are currently open. And the other eleven dots are stores that are, uh, in the process of, uh, various stages of approval. Um, and will be open within two years. Um, as you know, you can see the area will be fairly well saturated. And the next slide is just a summary of, uh, what we found out from each of these characteristics. Each, no, excuse me, each of these dispensaries, uh, that we couldn't find much on in one of them. But for the most part, uh, they're all in the, you know, three thousand, four thousand square foot range, some larger. Um, but, uh, most of them have at a minimum some, you know, twenty-five to thirty parking spaces. Some have flexibility depending on where they're located, um, and they have, you know, adequate, you know, parking on that. George touched on comment number three of Natasha's, which dealt with the employees. Um, and as we've stated, uh, there will be seven to ten full-time and part-time employees at any given time on the site. Natasha had a comment about snow removal, um, and, uh, that the applicant was responsible for snow removal on sidewalks. Uh, you just heard Chief Allen talk about deliveries. I have a slide, next slide, please. Keep on going. Okay, uh, before I get to that, um, I forgot to mention the parking exhibit. Uh, this shows an overall aerial that Landplex put together. And to the top right center, you can see where those fifteen off-site leased parking spaces will be. They're right across the street from the facility. Next slide, please. I won't go into this too much. Uh, there's your typical Ford Transit vehicle. Uh, that's what, uh, will be delivered, the product in, again, approximately twice a week. Um, and, uh, this information has all been submitted to the Lowell Police Department as part of our operations plan. And then, um, we talked about, um. Uh, transportation and bad management. Uh, and in this case, we're talking about, you know, the employees. Um, there is a bus route, there's two bus routes that run by the LRTA, excuse me, uh, that run down the site. And, uh, the applicant has agreed to, uh, provide subsidies to their employees should they decide they want traffic. A lot of the traffic, uh, on the Technology Drive is turning right out, but there are some left turns. And most of the crashes were the angle type collisions of with left turning vehicles. Um, so what we've agreed to do is, uh, re-strike the crosswalk, uh, across Technology Drive there. Uh, install some signage, probably, uh, initially, uh, with the approval of this, uh, Natasha Vance and DPW. Uh, install some intersection ahead signs, so owners are aware that there is an intersection ahead. Then her last comment was, um, the sidewalk on the property adjacent to Westford Street. Um, she just asked that we make sure that the sidewalk and bedded screen ramps there meet ADA requirements. And, uh, we will do, uh, field measurements out there. Um, and if they do not comply, we will make sure that they do comply. And then, um. Uh, Natasha on September first, uh, sent an email which we received. Um, which had four additional comment, or four comments. Um, the first one saying, you know, the responses to her, to our previous comments are acceptable. Uh, two, the parking is adequate. Um, and she just suggested, um, that the applicant note on their website and with some onsite signage. This is just the dispensary should park. Um, we would make sure, do every effort we can to make sure our customers park on the site because there will be adequate space. Um, and make sure that they don't park on Carl Street. Uh, then again, she, uh, just, uh, wants, uh, authorization on the signage we recommended for, uh. Westford Street at Technology Drive. And then, um, the last matter was, uh, she wanted coordination, um, with the traffic management plan, which is a culmination of all the. Documentation we provided in terms of the traffic study, in terms of the operations plan for the facility. Um, that when that meeting happens with the, uh, applicant and the police department, that, uh, she is kept involved in the loop on that. Uh, so that summarizes our responses to the, uh, city traffic engineer. Uh, now we'll briefly run through our drafted responses, uh, to the VAI's July fourteenth, twenty twenty memorandum. Um, first comment, um, again, can I go to the next slide, please? Uh, we talked about this, uh, Natasha brought this up and we clarified this. Uh, the trip generation was based on land use code eight-eight-two. And we used a twenty-three hundred square foot area because that represented the retail dispensary area. The rest of the area is really dead space or storage, technically does not generate trips. But I will come back to that, um, in a rebuttal response in a second. Then the, uh, in comment number two of the VAI memorandum. They indicated that there would be two hundred and eighty-five vehicle trips on an average weekday at Carl Street. Um, again, uh, that, uh, is, uh, based on older numbers. Um, in actuality, if we may, if we are exactly on point on our distribution for the project. Um, it would be less than that. Um, there would end up being a hundred and sixteen trips to or from, uh, Carl Street. But then again, they are going to be split at two driveways. Uh, they're not going to be all at one point. Uh, some are going to go east, some are going to go west. Um, so, and you break it down, if you look at the peak hour and the same distribution. Breaking down the highest peak hour of the generator, the weekday evening peak hour. You actually end up with fourteen additional vehicles over the course of an hour added to Carl Street over two directions. Uh, which if you really break it down even further, it comes down on average to one additional vehicle every eight and a half minutes. Uh, their comment number three, um, the intersections along Western Street corridor have one or more movements. They're operating over their design capacity with extended vehicle queuing. Uh, conditions that will be exasperated by the project, if which no improvements have been offered by the client. We have a number of unsignalized intersections in this area. There is no question that pre-COVID. Uh, Western Street corridor carries a substantial amount of volume. However, uh, the, the queuing that we looked at and we redid as part of this, uh, response, uh, actually the next response. We redid all the intersection passing analyses, we updated them all, uh, based on the twenty-three hundred square foot number. And the ITE traffic generation. And that indicated that, uh, there was not significant increase in queuing caused by this project. Further, um, just to, you know, sort of, I know this won't happen, but we, we ran this, uh, similar traffic generation comparison scenario. Um, as to two other potential uses which could go on the site, uh, without having to have a special permit, unless you had a drive-through probably. Um, and you can see that if we tried to put a convenience store on the site, if we tore the building down. It would generate almost three times as many trips as what we're projecting. And even a fast food restaurant would generate almost two, twice as many trips.
John, can you put that slide up?
Just, yeah, there it is. Um, so I just showed that as a comparison and that we use twenty-three hundred square feet for each of these uses. Uh, which is, you know, appropriate for what each of those sizes might have been. Um, again, we talked about the capacity at the driveways. Um, any queuing of vehicles exiting our site will be on our site, there's no question. Um, but the, if you look at, if you compare the, uh, updated capacity analysis results. Um, there is not a significant increase in queuing caused by our project. Um, again, uh, they talk about the improvements to, um, Western Street and Technology Park Drive. And we've, we, uh, discussed that as part of Natasha Vance's comments. Um, but I would just would like to point out that, um, based on our projections during the highest peak hour, which of the generator. Which would be on a Saturday. There would be approximately thirty-four additional vehicles on the through movements through that intersection on a Saturday. Which is a less than two percent increase in overall traffic. Uh, comment number seven, it was a question about the tenancy, which I think George summarized fairly well. Comment number eight, uh, Chief Allen, uh, I'm not going to go into that because basically what I have in my response is his. Uh, his report to the Lowell Police Department on what the operations would be. Um, comment number nine, uh, VAI stated that, you know, when they do marijuana dispensaries, they have a traffic management and parking management plan. Yeah, I agree, that's a good idea. And we have provided information which coincides with the traffic management plan, uh, for the facility. Uh, so that summarizes our August twelfth responses. And then, uh, yesterday, uh, at about three o'clock in the afternoon. We received their August one, two thousand and nineteen memorandum, uh, which had a few more comments. Uh, and I just wanted to touch on them briefly. Oops, grabbed the wrong document, I'm sorry. Hold on. Here it is. Uh, the first comment. The first comment in the VAI memorandum says the applicant has said that the dispensary will lease four thousand thirty square feet and that the trip generation should be based on the four thousand thirty square feet. And so what this slide shows is the comparison of the trip generation. Now, the methodology I used was similar to the methodology that was identified in VAI's traffic memorandum dated August one, two thousand and nineteen for how they develop trips for a dispensary when it's in excess of three thousand square feet. The ITE data right now is very limited and we all know that, but it is based on four studies. Two of them are three thousand square feet or larger and two of them are approximately fifteen hundred feet and smaller. And so what they have suggested is that when you look at a dispensary that's more than three thousand square feet, you should compare it to the dispensary with, with those data points. And that's what I did in this column here. If you take out the other two data points in the ITE data and use the weighted average trip generation that you come up with this, you end up with these trips which are even less than if we use the twenty-three hundred square feet that we used in our analysis, which takes into account all four data points. So we are sticking with these numbers. They appear reasonable and they're based on the IT. Next comment, they said referenced a, a dispensary located in Milbury, Massachusetts, which would increase trips up to a hundred and sixteen vehicle trips. No data, no information was provided for this as to when, where, how these towns were obtained. And I'm not sure that it's even representative of this area because Milbury is approximately fifty miles away to the southwest. Their third comment talks about, again, the square footage and the volume of traffic that you would add to Carl Street. And if we use their methodology, you know, it's a hundred and thirty-four trips that would go to Carl Street, not four hundred. Again, they, they bring up, again, we agree, the excessive crash rate at the Western Street intersection, we've discussed that. Talk about the, the traffic operations and I've touched on that. One thing I would like to point out, take it into a vacuum. The delay numbers that are referenced in the VAI memorandum are true. However, one must consider also the fact that the unsignalized capacity analysis methodology that we traffic engineers use is very, very conservative. And particularly when the volume to capacity ratio for the critical movements at the intersections get to be around one or even higher, the mathematical equation that calculates those said queues, it goes up parabolically. It's not a straight line, it's a parabola that rises at a very high rate. Lastly, they, they concur with the parking. And I don't think it's necessary to say, you know, we have to identify X spaces to park for the the tenants of the building, there will be adequate parking for the building. And finally, their last comment, apparently they must have missed it in the response, but we had all that information that's submitted to the local police department on the transportation demand management and the operations plan. And that's all I have to say for now. Thank you very much.
Ken?
I covered everything.
We've covered all the covered all, I lost the screen, covered all the responses, Mr. Chairman. We would like to reserve some time for rebuttal if necessary. But that, that concludes the, the presentation and concludes the responses that we've made, especially with respect to the traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you, counsel. One thing I know that Ken didn't bring up, that Ken read Miss, Mrs. Vance's memo from September third.
No, he did not, Chairman Lenihan, this is Natasha.
Natasha, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So I don't want to know if Ken wants to address that first. If not, we'll have Natasha address it and Ken speak later.
Now, we'll, we'll let Ken, we discussed this earlier. Ken, why don't you go ahead and, and address those concerns there with respect to the email from Natasha Vance?
I don't know if Ken's talking, but
Ken, we can see you speaking, but you're still muted.
No one reads lips anymore? The Natasha Vance's email of September three responds to the National Associates September, oh, the letter received yesterday. So, and she talks about the trip generation, the traffic lines, she concurs, you know, that Milbury is far away. It may not be appropriate, but she does suggest, and we agree, to a traffic monitoring program at whatever period of time the board feels is reasonable. She suggests three months, six months, a year and two years. She said on the intersection of Westford Street and Technology Drive, the sea is open to other remedies at the intersection based on appropriate engineering analysis. The summarize of the parking, quite acceptable and sufficient. Deliveries are twice a week by van and will not impact parking, particularly since they will park in that hatched out area. Then again, the opening operations plan will need approval by, you know, both the LPD and herself. So we concur with those comments as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Attorney, so that indicates application, I mean, what the applicant wants to state tonight at this point, anything further at this point? If not?
No, no, we just, you know, we're, you know, we're here to answer any questions and find any additional information that is required.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point in time, I'm going to open up to the public. I'm going to start off by asking if anybody wants to speak in favor of this matter this evening. Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? I know we did receive a bunch of letters and we did receive one letter in favor, so we will put that in as an exhibit. Hearing none for in favor at this point in time, I'll go in and anybody who wants to speak in opposition. Anybody in opposition?
Yes, Edward Caulfield? Hello?
Edward, we can hear you, so you can go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Edward Caulfield, five eighty-nine Princeton Boulevard, Lowell. There are twenty-eight thousand vehicles that travel over the Rock Bridge Monday through Friday. Fourteen thousand outbound and fourteen thousand inbound. At approximately two thirty in the afternoon, exit thirty-two on Route three is nothing but a parking lot. Those fourteen thousand vehicles are coming home. That traffic is ongoing until seven PM at night. There are six traffic lights from Panera Bread, Parkus Road, Wood Street, Princeton Boulevard, Middlesex Street and Pataca Boulevard. In order to get over that Rock Bridge, people have to wait in line for those six traffic lights. Mandrake the magician could not come up with a traffic plan. I don't think their traffic engineer can as well. And at twelve oh on Western Street, the road is at its narrowest. Location, location, location. This is not a good location for this retail store. The location Industrial Avenue in Lowell, I don't have a problem with that. People have access to the Lowell Connector, Route three, four ninety-five, ninety-three. You don't have any access to any major highway here unless you're going to wait in traffic for a long period of time. Attorney George Theodores at the last meeting indicated this won't affect any single family home people. Well, George, open your eyes. The Blackbrook Apartment House, the apartment houses on Princeton Boulevard, there's hundreds of people who live, live in those apartment houses. They will be affected. And Carl Street will be a disaster. It would have to be turned into a one-way street. I am in total opposition for this location for retail marijuana store. And I have one question. I want to know how many square feet you have for the lobby or for people to wait to be serviced?
Entry area is four hundred and thirty-four square feet.
Four hundred and thirty-four square feet, that's a little bit of an oversized living room in a family home. How many people do you plan on putting in that square footage?
You can support up to thirty people. John is correct. John?
Yep, thirty people is correct.
Technology Drive is an issue. Wood Street, Western Street is an issue, Parkus Road is an issue. It's a horrible location for this type of a business. I've told you this before and I am going to let other people who are in opposition offer their, offer their views. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it's Jeff Brown. Counsel. Call to Princeton Properties. I'm also one of the senior officers here at Princeton Properties. And so I'm, like to make a series of comments and then turn this matter over to Jeff Dirk, our traffic engineer. As you all may know, Princeton is a substantial property apartment owner. Throughout New England, we approach almost eight thousand apartments throughout New England. We have approximately one thousand apartments within this general area, all affected by the traffic congestion that's going to be generated from this, from this project. George, Mr. Theodoro mentioned an issue that our opposition to this project was a disservice to the city. And I feel on behalf of my team here at Princeton, I need to respond to that. Princeton is the largest landlord property owner in the city of Lowell. I don't know if we reached the amount generated by this project that is approximately five hundred thousand according to the applicant. But I would guess that our property taxes certainly well within that range. So to say, you know, we're opposing because it's some disservice to the city of Lowell is just absolutely not true. It has zero to do with that and I want to be upfront about that. The whole issue that somehow there's a stigma attached to having a marijuana facility next to our corporate office is just, is just not a factor at all. As, as George mentioned, there's a new age. This has been adopted by law. It is what it is. There's going to be five facilities in the area. We accept that. We, we have no issue with the fact that there's going to be a marijuana dispensary next door. What we have an issue with is the impacts that come from having that facility next door, how it affects our corporate office and how it affects the approximately one thousand apartments that are in the area, just as Mr. Caulfield mentioned, whether it's here on the nearby roadways, all the way up to Princeton Boulevard. You know, it's just, it just expands. There's a ripple effect to it that, that affects us. So, and I think it's also important to note that, you know, Princeton isn't just a property apartment owner. We are in the development business. I probably spend the majority of my week sitting in George and the applicant's seat proposing a project. Did so last night until ten o'clock in a local community. So we are constantly in some method of development. So I've appeared before many, many planning boards and I certainly recognize what, what the issues are that you're to consider. And I've been doing this a long time as well as, as George. And I think there's an old adage in, in planning, you know, you can't put ten pounds of you-know-what into a five-pound bag. Reason for that is it creates impacts. It creates impacts that then spread throughout. And I think that's exactly what our position is here. This is too intense an operation to, as it relates to the impacts that it spreads throughout the adjacent area, the neighborhoods. It just, that's, that's the crux of the issue. It's not that it's marijuana. It's the fact that these traffic impacts affect all of our communities and they are substantial. And so I know it's been mentioned that, you know, this project will bring a half a million dollars to the city and that that's to be a critical issue to be examined by the planning board. I'd just like to remind the planning board that under your own regulations, that when it comes to site plan approval, it says you will protect and promote the health and safety, convenience and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city and promote acceptable site plan practices. As on the state, site plan approval may be granted upon a determination by the planning board that the plan meets the following objectives. Objective number two, maximize pedestrian and vehicular safety on the site to the site and egressing from it. And it's, it's in that vein that I ask you to focus on what the criteria are that you're supposed to analyze, not whatever economic benefit this brings to the city and as taxpayers like Princeton. You know, we, we understand what the tax, what the economic benefit was and obviously it speaks, it speaks for itself. That criteria is also echoed in the requirements for a special permit. I'm reading again your own regulations. Special permit shall be granted by the special permit granting authority only upon its written determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not weigh the beneficial impacts to the city and neighborhood. The determination shall include consideration of each of the following. Number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Number four, neighborhood character and social structures. And then it goes on further, in, in the section on traffic and safety. How does the project address traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading? Will the project impact the area? But those are the criteria that it's your task to analyze. Not what's the great financial windfall of this project, but those specific criteria. And it's our position that if you were to focus in on those criteria, and I'm going to have Jeff speak to them more specifically in a few minutes, it is for those reasons and based on that criteria that we believe you cannot approve these permits. And so that's, again, that's the crux of our argument. We mean no disservice to the the city. I think actually we provide quite a bit of benefit to the I think actually we provide quite a bit of benefit to the service. A great deal of our housing is affordable housing that offers a great benefit to the city of, city of Lowell. I would like to address a few preliminary items before I turn it over to Jeff. They do delve a little bit into traffic, but I think just on, on a very preliminary level. The first item is that, you know, Mr. Cram said, you know, we are, you're all, the applicant is estimating that there will be 582 vehicle trips per day from this project. Nowhere in any aspect of the applicant's materials is there an explanation as to why Mr. Cram's new number of 582 differs from two previous traffic submittals by niche engineering that project traffic at 713. So we have an 18% reduction in traffic. Where? I don't know. But on the flip side of that, if you add an 18% factor to what the impacts are, they speak for themselves if the two prior traffic reports were a whole true. And I don't know what, I don't know what the difference is and how they, they come up with that, but I leave that to you as an issue of how credibility and how you assess that traffic data. So that's, that's one just preliminary point. The other has to do with, and I believe Mr. Theodoro implicitly, when he said, you know, we need the whole 44,300 square feet of the space because of safety reasons, and you can't share corridors and that whole, and all of that, and that certainly makes perfect sense to me. But when you back down and you look at those numbers, and I can impose upon Mr. Cavaney to pull up that layout plan. John, would you, be possible that you could do that, please?
Yeah, one, one second, please.
So this goes through everything that the applicant talked about, the dispensary there of 1451, and then somehow arbitrarily, they say, well, we only need 2,300 square feet, and that is what it is. I don't think that's the same layout plan as was submitted in one of the previous narratives by the applicant. So I'll ask the, the board to please look at, I have a layout plan dated. I don't know what the date is, but it was certainly submitted as prior, as one of the prior layout plans, and it actually has a square feet of all the other rooms in, in the building or in that first, that first, that first floor. So you have some office space, you have security retainage, you have room for, you have room for inventory, cash, offices, and things of that nature. So I don't understand the reasoning that you arbitrarily retract that space from the total square foot count that is the critical basis upon which you determine your vehicle trips. You say it's 2,300? Yeah, if you select a few select places, yes, it's 20, 2,300. Why you don't include storage, security, cash, inventory, office staff, staff area, all these other rooms that come to 4,300 square feet? I guess it's just selective, a selective process that you've undertaken. But obviously, if you were to use the true 4,300 square feet for this office, or perhaps it's 4,003, 4,030, you know, you get, you get some different numbers. And my concern is all traffic is based upon projections, and depending upon whether you use 2,300 feet as the basis, 4,000 feet as the basis, those numbers can vary in the traffic counts up to, based on my crude calculations, over 42% more traffic, depending upon how you just arbitrarily pick the rooms that you picked the room. So certainly brings into question to me what these vehicle trips are. And the last thing that I will mention before I turn it over to Jeff is, as Mr. Cram mentioned, you're adding at his lower traffic counts than were submitted by the applicant, by his prior engineer on two occasions with 713. He's now reduced those to 5, 582. There is no way in, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, don't pretend to be, but I don't think with a straight face you can say to anybody, I'm going to add 582 vehicles to this traffic corridor, and I'm not going to impact these intersections. It's just illogical. You know, it is going to, it is going to impact those intersections. And I think Mr. Cram even admitted that Mr. Dirk's assessment of what the traffic queuing at these intersections would be. And again, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, but based on Jeff's, Jeff's analysis, we have two-minute delays per vehicle at the Wood Street, Westford Street intersection. We have five-minute delays per vehicle at the Carl Street, Westford Street intersection. And we have four minutes of increased delays at the Technology Drive, Westford Street intersection. So, and as acknowledged, those, those numbers, he did explain something about it being parabolic or not parabolic. I don't know. The numbers speak for themselves. These are the types of impacts that affect us, affect our residents, and affect, and it's a ripple effect throughout the entire area from Wood Street out to all the way out to the, to the other, whether it's Stedman Street, whether it's Princeton Boulevard, you know, this ripple effect of traffic affects all of our communities in the, in the area. So I will reserve any final comments, but at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Dirk, Princeton's traffic engineer from Vanessa Associates. So I thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have any further comments at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk, I'm a partner with Vanessa Associates. And as you heard, we prepared a couple of reviews of this, this project itself. And I, I think Jeff went through some of the highlights, and I want to focus in on a few probably major points of our, our letter itself. I do want to stress that as we, as we review these projects, it's, the way that I go about doing this is the same as when I conduct reviews for the planning board. So it's really just taking a look at the methodology that was used to really make sure, I think, as you're assessing this project, to make sure that you've got all the facts in front of you as to what the real impacts of the development may be. And so that, that's the type of review that we undertook with respect to this project itself. So there's been a lot of discussion about the square footage of the building, and I think our primary concern with respect to, again, making sure that you have the right information with respect to the impacts of the project, is that there's a specific methodology that is used when we estimate traffic as traffic engineers. And I know I've presented this to you before, but as we're looking at the square footage of this building, you do not get to cherry pick the amount of space that you want included in your trip generation calculations. The methodology is very clear. It's the gross square footage of the building. It includes all of the interior perimeter of the walls within the space that's to be occupied. You don't get to just use the sales area. If I came and presented to you a traffic study for a convenience store that's 4,000 square feet and said to you, I'm only going to do the traffic generation based on the customer sales area, and we're going to forget about the other half of the building that is required, that is the storage spaces, the restrooms, that would not be acceptable. That's what's being, that's what's being done here, and that's, that's what concerns us with respect to the trip generation. There is no documentation through the Institute of Transportation Engineers that says that you get to exclude the space that they've excluded. It has to all be included. The architect can net out the common areas, which would be the stairwell space, but you can't cherry pick and remove the areas that are going to be used for storage or back-up house operations. I don't think you can find a traffic study that's been submitted to you where developers at a supermarket or any type of retail space where they've said, all we're going to include is the customer sales area. Forget about the area where storing product. It's just not done that way. And that's what's, that's what's been presented to you. So if you only assume half the space in your trip generation calculations, you, it, just by virtue of that, the numbers are off by 50%. And so that's, that's what concerns us in looking at the methodology. Now, I know Mr. Cram had presented some trip generation calculations using a similar methodology to what we had used in an older study. And one of the things that we as traffic engineers have as a benefit is having a peer review done. One of the peer reviews that I had done of a prior traffic study for a marijuana dispensary, actually the peer reviewer had asked us to use data from some monitoring that they had done at a dispensary in the city of Lowell. When we use that data, what you actually find is that it is a pretty good representation of the IT data that Mr. Cram used. However, you need to apply that to the entire square footage. So the net comment and what the result of a reanalysis of what Mr. Cram had presented using our older trip generation methodologies, in fact, you cannot exclude the data points from the IT data that was presented. You can't just use the larger square footage sites and not use the lower square footage. That was the net result of that peer review. So what it gets back to is the IT data is actually pretty valid, and that data is representative of what we actually found when we monitored the dispensary that was mentioned in Milbury, just outside of Worcester, and looked at those numbers. They actually replicate the IT data very well. However, it has to be applied to the total square footage of the building. And that gets back to our point. The numbers that you're looking at are off by at least 50% because they've excluded the space. You just can't do that. The other point that I want to make is when you heard the architect talk about, if we just look at the 2,300 square feet, they have a vestibule area that they've said can accommodate 30 people. Then they've got a sales area that can accommodate 66 people. If you just physically look at that space there that can hold the number of people there, this, that's 96 people, just within that space there itself. This all just really gets back to what we want to see. And again, me as representing the abutter is really, we want to get down to what are the real traffic numbers that are associated with this building? And it keeps coming back to, you need to use, you, you can use the IT data, because I think that's fairly representative, but you can't cherry pick the space you're going to apply it to. It needs to be applied to the entire square footage that this tenant is going to occupy. They can net out the stairwells, but you can't net out the back of house operations. There is no basis for doing that at all. And in fact, it is not consistent with the trip generation methodology from the IT. If you do include all of the square footage, the numbers are almost double what you see. So we're looking at somewhere between, you know, 100 to 150 trips during the peak hour, to the extent that the board does not imply conditions relating to capacity limitations at this location. And really, as the abutter, what we want to understand is what is the true volume of traffic that will be generated by this project? And we do not take exception with the use of the IT data. However, we do want it applied appropriately, which is to the entire square footage that this use will occupy, including the back-up house operations, because that's the appropriate methodology to be used in this case. If the applicant wants to conduct traffic counts at one of the dispensaries that's open in Lowell and apply that to this building, then that's fine. That's something we'd look at. It's obviously very representative. But again, the methodology that's been presented to you is not correct. It does not present a total picture of the amount of traffic that this project would be generating. If they want to provide anecdotal information from one of the Lowell dispensaries, then that's fine. That probably would be more representative of what might happen at this site itself. The other thing is the context of the project, and I think that's something that, that keeps coming up. Westward Street accommodates pre-COVID, in the applicant's own traffic study, 24,000 vehicles per day, 24,000 vehicles per day on a two-lane road that's coming into a signalized intersection with Wood Street. The applicant's own traffic study, and so there's been three, two traffic studies and a response to comments for this site. Each and every time an analysis is done, it is showing, as we all know, the Wood Street intersection is operating over capacity and has been for quite some time. So there's long vehicle queues that extend from that. Now, getting away from the delays that were mentioned of the two minutes and the five minutes and, and suggestions that, well, we're kind of out of the range of the capacity, of the calibration of the model, the fact of the matter is that the queues at that intersection back up to Carl Street. The queues at the Technology Drive intersection with Westward Street back up to Carl Street. So what that means is, when you look at the capacity analysis that was done, it's reporting that, hey, limited delays at Carl Street and Technology Drive, limited delays down at Carl Street and Westward Street, it's just not real, because we know that those queues back up past those intersections irrespective of the delay. So what that means is Carl Street is already impacted. You are not able to get in or out of that on either end of the road. So that means that this project in reality is much more focused on Westward Street. 24,000 vehicles per day, and then there's an intersection within a couple hundred feet that has been acknowledged is a high crash location, which we don't think the measures that have been suggested necessarily address that high crash situation. So it gets back to that point of really looking at, are you looking at traffic numbers with respect to this project that are truly representative of the amount of traffic the project will generate? That's the first thing. The second thing is, to the extent that those numbers are off, we've already demonstrated, the applicant has demonstrated through three, two traffic studies and a response to comments, that we have intersections that are operating over their design capacity with long queues, which directly impact the ability of vehicles to use Carl Street, which means more of the focus of this project ends up on Westward Street, which has its own capacity limitations, which potentially then has ripple effects as to queuing within the project site itself and how circulation works. So really what we want to see with all those conditions I just described is, we want a true picture of the amount of traffic this project's going to generate, either through using the IT data and applying it to the entire square footage of the first floor of the building, or conducting traffic counts at an open dispensary, and it can be one of the local that has no restrictions placed on it, or if there are restrictions, the applicant would need to indicate that they're willing to accept the same type of restrictions at this site, so that both us as the abutter, the neighbors, and the planning board has a true picture of the amount of traffic that this project is going to generate. So then, to the extent that you're inclined to approve something here, at least you would have appropriate information to structure conditions, and if those conditions involve limitations or scheduling of appointments, that you have good data to base that on. And that's, that's really what we want to see. It's really going back to that fine point of making sure that we've got good information, that you have good information as well, to be able to understand the true impacts. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Good seeing you again. Anybody else?
I don't have any further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll, I'll go further and see if anybody else in the public would like to speak. Anybody else in the public want to speak this evening?
Hi, this is Erin Bradley. I think I spoke at the, excuse me, the July meeting, and I, I still have the same position, the fact that both Jeff and Jeff, and also I'm at 39 Carl Street, across the street from where this property is being proposed in Carlton Place. And what both Jeff and Jeff and the gentleman who spoke before them have all said is, is my feelings exactly. I don't have a problem with this business at all. I've actually been to a dispensary, and it's the one over that the first gentleman was talking about, over 495 and Route 3, and it was actually wild. It was a weekday afternoon, and there were queues out the door. They had tents up and, and a queue like you would see at a, an amusement park with, with lines. They had tents up and, and a queue like you would see at a, an amusement park with, with lines. Um, so I would say that I just don't know how that this location is the appropriate location for this kind of business. And, um. I, I also think that folks, you know, the map they showed with the dispensaries currently and the planned dispensaries doesn't take into account. The surrounding communities are going to be trying to come into this area to take advantage of, of Lowell's regulations. As opposed to what's in their surrounding neighborhoods. And, you know, in the long run, as Jeff was saying, yeah, you might gain money from, from the dispensary, but at what expense? You know, you're pissing off the people who live around here. And we contribute a lot to the community in terms of the taxes we pay, in terms of the shopping we do in the area. And so, uh, all in all, I just am opposed to this and I appreciate your time this evening. And on a completely random note, but I just want to say that, um. I really appreciate the communication that the city of Lowell has had in sending me meeting updates and information, questions that I had for them. So appreciate intruders for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma'am. Thank you for your comments for the city of Lowell.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add one further comment? I think there was a previous comment by the applicant that. Whatever traffic flow issues that are on Carl Street are related to purely our tenants. Um, I think everyone who knows the area will know. There's two other substantial apartment communities that come off of Carl Street. That also park in those areas. It's public parking. And so it, you know, that. Problem with two-way traffic on Carl Street isn't entirely attributable to Princeton. I think that's an inaccurate statement. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak to me guys of this project this evening? Anybody else? Anybody else calling in? Okay, if not, at this point in time, I will turn it over to board members. But the only comment I'm, I'm going to have before I turn over to board members is, when we do look at our site plan and our special permit. We don't look at the economic gain. It's not listed as, as indicated. Um, but we basically don't say how much money is going to bring into the city, whether we're going to vote for matter. Um, as was brought out by our guidelines, you know, we do the traffic and congestion and the special permit and all that, but. We don't look at the economics and who pays taxes, who doesn't, how much. That's not one of our criteria we stick a determination on. And it's spelled out in our site plan as well as our special permit. And economic gain is not something that we consider. So. Saying that, I'm going to move along at this time. And if any of the board members, I'll turn it over to them. Any of the board members may have some questions. Thank you. Anybody want to start from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Melvin.
Yeah, Bob, good evening.
Hi, um. I, my initial reaction when I looked at all this traffic data was. That I. After forty years of working in city planning. And being aware of zoning regulations. I always thought parking was based on total square footage of the facility. And I think that there is a real error here with. The applicant. Uh, cutting a portion of the back, uh, the backspace. Is being not part of their facility counting for parking. I think they're wrong. Uh, I agree with the Vanessa. Vanessa, uh, company's, um, review of this, and I concur with them. Um, that's my major comment. So I'm having a hard time making a decision on this. When I'm only getting half the traffic impact of the facility. In the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Mr. Lekka, yes.
Uh, just to follow up on what Bob said, I, yeah, I think there's a. I'll, I'll ask it in a different way. Um, what exactly was included in the number that the applicant used? To, uh, calculate traffic impact? Was it twenty-three hundred square feet?
That's what they.
Yes.
That's what I thought they were basing it on. But the rentable space is like four thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah. Forty-three hundred. So, you know, obviously. I, I agree with Bob and his assessment, uh. You know, it's hard to make a decision based on. I, I don't have a clear picture of what the impact is. Cause the, you know, the numbers. That we use are, are wrong apparently. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lekka.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, um.
Mr. Fischette, go right ahead.
To, uh. To, uh, Bob's point and, and, and Rich, I guess, I'd like to ask Natasha because, uh, obviously that. You know, with, with everything else, I think the biggest issue is trying to understand the impact. Um, it, it, I mean, it's a sensitive area, but we can get into, I have some questions even for. For, uh, Jeff Dirk as well, but I really want to start with Natasha is, is. You know, we're, we're sitting here, we're not traffic engineers. Uh, we deal a lot with zoning and how we apply some of these calculations. And I, I think we're just, I, I, I want clarification from the city's traffic engineer as to.
More.
What is the appropriate method? Natasha, I'm sorry, are you available?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted.
Okay, fine.
Twenty twenty.
It's common these days, yes.
Yes, um, I thought I had unmuted myself. Um, yeah, so Natasha Vance, Transportation Engineer for the city. Um, so. I would note that for convenience stores and grocery stores and things like that, you do typically take the entire square footage of the building. Um, to consider for trip generation. Um, I would note that for, we've had a number of applications for marijuana dispensaries. Um, Patriot Care is the one that's come up, and that particular dispensary was associated with a giant. Um, manufacturing, uh, facility. So they only looked at the square footage of the dispensary. So, um. You know, yes, so the, one of the problems with the IT, um, not problems, but. As, as Mr. Cram and Mr. Dirk both noted, there are only four, um, dispensaries listed. You know, the data from the IT for marijuana dispensary traffic trip generation is based on four total dispensaries in Colorado and Oregon. Um, so in the IT, it's, it's the IT itself cautions its use that you, um, you have to consider that. Um, I, I only got VAI's letter this afternoon and I didn't have a lot of time to do any, to do significant research. I did look at a number of other communities that are the, um, you know, information that was available. For dispensaries that they had approved and there's a lot of sort of, I would say disagreement in the traffic engineering world. With regards to how you would do trip generation for marijuana dispensaries. Um, I know that's not the cut and dry answer you're looking for. Um, so I would say that. I think arguments can be made both ways, and I feel like both traffic engineers that presented here tonight made a compelling arguments. Um, I just would also note, just in general. Um, throughout the city, whenever we're looking at site plan review, we, we do. Almost always have congested streets, existing traffic problems. Um, and we do request mitigation based on the impact that the particular project has. So, um, for instance, if this was a, um, a market basket going in at this location. And they were going to generate thousands of additional trips, we would want them to evaluate, um, the adjacent intersections based on that. Um, given the, whether it's seven hundred or five hundred trips a day relative to the rest of the congestion in the city. And on these particular streets, it's a fairly small number. So that's just something I factor in when I'm. Asking for traffic mitigation. I do think, um, a traffic monitoring. Program might be appropriate in this location. Um, did that, uh, member Fischette, did that answer your question?
Well, I, I think, and I think that's the, the, the challenge is the, the data is still, um. You know, it's still developing across the country. There's not a lot of data on, on the impact. So we do have, uh. Uh, local facility, uh, but even that is, is, uh, I could see both of these facilities drawing on the same. Customer base, therefore diluting the trips to each particular, the one on industrial avenues here. I guess the other question is, as well as we try to apply, um. The impact of five hundred or seven hundred, uh, automobiles as it disperses. I, I know some of the, the effects that we see of the congestion there, and it, and it's terrible. I, I, I go through that. Quite often. And, but I, I don't know if it, the true impact is going to be at the height of the commute. Is somebody going. Is, you know, how many customers are you going to get at five o'clock in the afternoon versus how is that going to disperse? Uh, during the, the, the weekday. Uh, you know, by rights, you can put a restaurant, you can, you know, you can put, uh, other offices where you have office building and a, and an office. Uh, such as that where you have shift changes. Uh, I live in a neighborhood with a massive shift change that actually is a corridor of the largest employment corridor in the great little area. Uh, and you know when there's a shift change. Um, and then, um. Again, a restaurant, I see people going for dinner. So obviously that would cause, uh, uh, quite an impact at that point. I, I just, is there any data as to how that disperses? I, I don't, uh. Uh, I think it's very difficult, difficult for us to get some real clear data, uh, as to, uh, the impact. And I just, honest, I almost opened up the, the, the three traffic engineers that are out there. I'm just a little curious about.
So Mr. Fischette, if I could, the, um, so I do have. I have twelve hours of data for the Milbury site that we had just surveyed recently. And what I can tell you is that. The Milbury site, whether you want to consider it representative or not, it's just outside of Worcester. It's right off of Route one forty-six. So if we look at this site, you've got draw from Route Three. So you're going to be drawing some down from New Hampshire because that's what happens. I worked on a dispensary that's in Salisbury that's off of ninety-five, and they draw from New Hampshire as well. So, so you look at a lot of those factors. What I would say to you in terms of dispersal is that the peak. Time period for traffic and customer actually does coincide with the weekday evening peak hour. That's what we had seen. So that's, that's when you have a peak impact. It's, it's during the evening peak hour. And then also during that Saturday midday time. Now, what the data would suggest. Is that the numbers are much higher than what has been estimated using these actual traffic. So it's going to be something less than if I applied IT to the full square footage of the building. But it, but it's not eighty-four trips. It's more, it's well over a hundred peak hour trips. If you apply the trip rate per thousand square feet to the amount of space that's being occupied here. The peak's going to happen in the evening, and when you look at when the most congestion happens on that roadway, it's in the eve.
Now, Mr. Dirk, now, now the, the, um. Just a little curious because I, I honestly take issue in general whether it works to our favor or not. Start using, using traffic information from, say, um, out by Worcester. But in that particular facility, was there another facility, uh, uh, close by, such as the one on industrial lab here with Patriot Care? Cause obviously that's going to, uh, take away from, I think, some of the impact that ea- either site, to be honest.
So there's not, and I agree with you, that competition leads to dispersal, dispersal of trips. Um, so, so you are right that there will be some distribution between those sites. However, I think one of the things again that you need to look at at this site is the proximity to Route Three. That will have an influence on if you're using Route Three and you're getting off on Westford Street. The proximity of this dispensary to a major interchange irrespective of the congestion. Because, you know, these are trips where you say that this is a purchase that you're going to make. This is your sole destination. So you're going there because of where this site is located. So proximity to a highway. Does have an influence. Competing opportunities does have an influence. So I think it just, it really just gets back to. Is the data that you had before you representative of this site? And I think that's, that's really what I think we're all trying to grapple with. And, and what we're trying to say to you is that. If you apply the IT methodology the correct way, the way it's supposed to be applied, you end up with higher traffic numbers than were estimated. If you look at the original traffic study that was done for this project, you have higher traffic numbers than are presented to you tonight. If you look at data, absent, absent any other data, if you look at data from another operating facility that was recently collected. You end up with higher traffic numbers than were estimated for this site. So we're looking at three different things. One of them was produced by the applicant. And all of those, all of those data points are pointing to these numbers being higher than what's been presented to you. And all we're trying to do is try to come up with what is the, what are the right numbers for this site? And three data points are saying these aren't the right number. And we just want to arrive at, in order to understand the true impact of this project. We need to be looking at numbers that are appropriate for this location, and we're not seeing that in terms of the data that was presented.
Now, of course, to your point, Mr. Dirk, what I'm, what I'm concerned about, if I really sit back and just. It listened with an open mind as to what I'm hearing here this evening is that we're not going to come up. With a standard everybody's going to agree with. You're representing your client. We have a traffic engineer representing his client. And we have even the city's traffic engineer saying, hey, you know what? There is still some controversy in this industry is how we actually determine. So, uh, obviously that, that presents quite a dilemma for the board, I think, at this point.
Um, absolutely, yeah. And I, and I, I, again, I never want to be sitting in your, in your seat at all. And I think all we want to do is come up with something that's reasonable, but I would also suggest that. You know, as a board, you, you're looking out for the community, you're looking out for the city. But in order for you to, to put proper conditions on a project to try to come to grips with the impacts of that project. You really have got to be starting with good numbers. Because if you've got some good numbers to start with, then, then the board can look at it and say, you know what? We think this might be too high, and so here's how we're going to condition it. To make sure that the numbers are more in line with what we want to see, and then you do your monitoring. And if it all works, then you can talk about, you know, relaxing some of those conditions. But you've got to start with some good numbers to begin with so that then you can put proper conditions in.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject please?
Sure, Ken, go ahead.
Um. We are in this position, as with many projects, during the course of a project's history. Uh, and Mr. Dirk will agree with me on this. Um, the size of the project changes initially quite often. Until you get a final size. Um. And that's what happened in this case here, in developing the, the square footage of what we call the retail area. Uh, which we based our square footage on, which we developed the twenty-three hundred square feet from. The rest is back office. That includes, that back office space and storage. You know, that includes the employees who were part of that seven to ten on a daily basis that are in our traffic generation numbers. What threw us off, um, was the, what threw me off was. Jeff's, uh, Mr. Dirk's memorandum from. August first, two thousand and nineteen, um, just about a year ago now. Um, in terms of how he calculated the trips. And I've known Mr. Dirk for many years, and I know he's a good traffic engineer. And I know why would he write something that was false? Uh, so that's what led me down the path to looking at the traffic generation based on just the dispensary area itself. If we look at the IT data for the trips, and we all know, it's been said many times tonight. Um, the data is limited, and we have to go with the best data we have. And if you looked at what the traffic generation is from the IT database for the two sites. Um, that are over three thousand square feet, uh, simply on a weekday daily basis. And you, and you project our four thousand, um, you're, you're generating trips four times much. As the IT, two IT sources that are at three thousand square feet. Um, so that's why, you know, you, you have to look at all the data and you, you, you make the best engineering judgment we can. Uh, if we were to rerun all the numbers. Findings would change. Uh, the level of service would still be the same. Uh, granted, the calculated queues would probably go up a little bit. Um, but would they be up significantly? No. Um, not, if we had the one car queue, maybe it goes, maybe the queue gets increased by two. Um, but we all know that, um, again, I'll say it again. But we all know that, um, again, and I'll say it again, the, the operational analysis for an unsignalized intersection. Granted, there may be impacts due to queuing from another nearby intersection. But that's what happens in this quarter right now today. One thing we haven't even talked about is, um, you know, if harvest moons were not in as part of this application, uh, the landlord is at will to fill the space with whoever he wants. Uh, and they could generate the same amount of traffic, whatever ends up going in there. With absolutely no mitigation or no discussion at all whatsoever. So rerunning the numbers.
If I could, if I could just interrupt, I mean, and that's, and I believe me, I, I've looked at that and I think that's something that, uh, I mean, we're looking at this project as it, on its merits as it stands before us, but I think that is a valid point. That, um, there is, there is some by right options here to occupy this, uh, facility that could generate as much traffic and perhaps even generate more traffic at, um, at the peak hours. And I fully understand that. I think, I think that needs to be at least understood. However, what we're trying to decide is project as for uh, in, in the, the impact. And if we are going to vote, fully understanding what that impact is. I think that's what the issue is at the moment is just trying to fully understand the impact based on some numbers that we can reasonably, uh, agree to. So, um, I guess what I would be looking for, and I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, uh, is really the city's traffic engineer, perhaps even working with D P D. Really, the, the, the marijuana, um, ordinance was crafted, uh, as a result of the vote taken by the, the citizens of Massachusetts and the city of Lowell. We voted on it and adopted it as part of the zoning ordinance. And, uh, matter of fact, it was, it was, eh, eh, it was modified as it came forward. Understanding that some of the, 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 um, security and, and traffic plan, uh, really for security purposes was best not presenting before the board for a privacy sake of remain secure and the police department have to prove it. I'm really looking for, uh, maybe more guidance from the city's traffic engineer and D P D, perhaps even doing some research on the proper application of how we determine the, the usage of the square footage as it pertains to traffic generation. And whether or not it affects the parking, I think, uh, based on what's being presented, everybody seems to feel that the parking is adequately addressed. But again, I, 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 I think, I, I think we need to look at this. Understanding there's very little data available even across the country. And I think that's, that's a tremendous challenge. But, um, I, I, I think if we could, Mr. Chairman, and again, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I really would be looking for some more technical guidance from D P D and the city's traffic engineer as to a, a formula the city feels is applicable here. So, thank you. That's, that's I, and I will just say on the, on the special permit, uh, eh, eh, into the, the chairman's point, eh, eh, correct, but there are six factors as well. It's, eh, eh, the traffic is obviously a big issue and and, and often is, is, uh, the most contentious issue for a, a project. But it is the social, economic and community needs that I have to be looked at. And, and this was in D P D's memo, uh, that's out online for people to see. And it's on page one seventeen of the city zoning ordinance. There's six factors within a, um, a, um, a site, uh, I'm sorry, a special permit. And, and, and Mr. Brown, you, you say you go before boards all the time and, and you're very, uh, comfortable around this. You, you conveniently pick the two items that you had there and, and not citing the other items. But we do look at the social and economic uh, of community needs. We do, and then we look at traffic flow, get very important and it becomes a, a big issue for the neighborhoods. Uh, adequacy of utilities and services, that seems to be no issue at this point. Neighborhood character and social structure, uh, obviously that becomes an issue eh, in some, uh, occasions. And then the impact on the natural environment, which does not seem to be an issue again, and the potential of fiscal impact, including impact on the city services, tax base and employment. I want to make that clear. I know, uh, Mr. Brown, you picked specifically the traffic because that was, uh, uh, the issue that really, eh, eh, I think it's the, the, the crux of the matter here, but I just want to make that clear on a, on a special permit. There, there are many other factors that the board has to consider when a project is presented. So, again, that's, uh, that, that's my thoughts at this point, Mr. Chairman. I, I really would be looking for more guidance as to what the city feels is a proper application, uh, of, uh, of the space as it relates to traffic calculation. Thank you.
Jerry, do you mind if we ask Natasha if, if she has a comment on that?
Uh, sure. I don't know if I want to, yeah, put it on the spot.
At this time, I'll see if. Yeah, if, if, if she wants to respond or we reserve or.
Sure, um, I, I think I would like to, um, take a closer look at some of the other applications for dispensaries in the city. Look at the methodologies that they look at and just try to, so that everything is consistent across the board. Um, I know in the Patriot Care instance, um, they had a giant facility and they only used the, um, the smaller square footage, but I don't know, um, off the top of my head if that square footage included backspace or if that was just their retail space. Um, and then obviously as the board knows, they had a very detailed operating plan, um, and offsite parking, et cetera. So I think I, I would prefer to do some, um, investigating. I, I also think it's probably not unreasonable for, to talk with Patriot Care and see if they're if the trips that they're seeing are matching with what they anticipated. We also, I know the, the, we have Mayflower Medicinals is going in on Manufacturer Street in the, and so they will open up before if this, if this dispensary were to be approved. So I, I do think we're going to have a, a multiple number of dispensaries in the city and it will disperse traffic. I do agree with Mr. Dirk that the proximity of Route three will definitely bring traffic off the highway. And I'm curious about the Millbury, um, and maybe Mr. Dirk can answer this. Did the dispensary have an idea as to why, um, people were coming, uh, it sounds like they were coming on their lunch hour and on their way home? If I had to guess, based on what you were saying that with the peak. And I'm wondering if the dispensary did any, um, had any, uh, data, a data point on that.
They didn't have customer surveys in terms of it, but what we, as I mentioned, we have, uh, ten to twelve hours worth of traffic counts. And what we did find is that there is the peak hour of the generator is actually the peak coincides with the weekday evening peak hour. Whether people are just stopping there on their way home, um, that could be what it is. Again, you know, they didn't do customer surveys. So we have no, no, um, idea why the spike was happening then, but the, the evening peak hour coinciding with the roadway peak hour, um, was consistent with what the peak hour of the generator was. So just looking at that would lead us to believe that it did have some relationship to people's travel patterns at that time of day, which would say, suggested as, does have to do with the, um, people coming home from work essentially.
Okay, interesting. Um, yeah, I, I just think it might be worth talking to Patriot Care about what they're, what they're experiencing with regards to traffic and in terms of when their peaks are, because as one of the, um, residents mentioned, um, when I have driven by Patriot Care's facility, there have been lines out the door. So, uh, but it definitely, I've been by there various times throughout the day and it, it doesn't, it seems to be sort of unceasing. So I had the impression that it was evenly distributed throughout the day. But again, not based on data, but simply based on, um, anecdotal evidence. And I would prefer to make a decision based on data.
Chairman, can I ask, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Natasha?
Sure. Natasha wants to answer it.
I, I think she will if she knows the answer.
If not, she doesn't have to.
Of the, any of the others, uh, dispensaries in Lowell, do they have a monitoring program?
Uh, so Patriot Care is the only other currently open dispensary and they do not have a monitoring program. To my, that I can recall. Jared, do you recall if that was the condition of the, um, planning board?
Unfortunately, I do not recall that off the top of my head. I would need to look at those project files.
We did have a monitoring program, I believe. It was, um, part of it was monitored by the police department. What happened was we had, um, details set up by the police officers and they able to report back. And then Patriot McClear, uh, said they would put two police officers out there to begin with on a daily basis. And, and they asked for how long that would be. And I told Patriot Care was not up to the planning board. It was up to the city of Lowell Police Department. Cause they're the ones who put the agreement in place and it was totally up to them. So they did monitor it. With, um, um, and the board members come back, maybe recall this. I know Jerry remembers it. Uh, could we melt in the decisive result altogether? And we had a concern, but they had police officers on site and the question was how long were they going to be there? And that was totally up to the agreement with the police department. So the monitoring process was done through the police department, um, for how often they needed police officers on duty for a period of how long a period of time.
Yes, I had forgotten all about that. Thank you for, for reminding me.
Yeah, I hope that answers the question. I think the other board member maybe called that. Jerry, you remember that? I mean, and then when, when Patriot said, well, how long is it going to be, Mr. Chairman? I said, it's not up to me and us. What do you mean? It's up to this, this police department. That's the agreement you have with them. They tell you they're going to put two police officers out there for four years. It's going to be for four years. It's going to be for six months, it's going to be for three months, it's going to be for a year. Well, I don't like that. I said, well, that's out of agreement with the police department. Nothing, and that was nothing to do with the, with the board. So obviously you have to traffic and monitor plan that we don't have now, which says in the applicants that we, we will get it once they agree upon with the traffic engineer and the, um, police department. But, uh, we had a lot of that information given to us ahead of time when we approved the Patriot, um, Patriot project because we knew what the police were going to do and how they're going to take care of the traffic. So that helped us answer a lot of questions and how to mitigate the traffic problem.
The monitoring I was talking about was actual physical measuring and counting of cars coming in to and out.
Okay, I thought you meant, okay, because this was also controlling the site with, uh, the congestion, the parking and, and, um, there was concerns of neighbors and people parking on side streets that they didn't belong to. And that was something that the police department, um, also got involved with. Yeah.
That's, that's typically part of every operational plan for a dispensary to make sure that doesn't happen. And eh, until the police department is satisfied, that is the way it is. Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Dirk.
Sure. If you don't mind Jeff answering the question, if you're fine with that, that's up to him.
Would Mr. Dirk be willing to share his traffic count information that he has from his Millbury site?
Absolutely. And, and, um, as well, the data that I was mentioning, the data that I was mentioning that we use to, um, as a part of the peer review that came back to us for the, for the Haverhill site was based on Patriot Care. And I think Greaman Peterson provided to us or G P I provided us actual traffic observations from Patriot Care to be used to adjust the traffic volumes that we used in the study that you're referencing. So I'm happy to provide those numbers to you as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
At the end of the day. Mr. Chairman, that's all I, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had. It's, I just think it's with Natasha's, uh, eh, is amenable to that. And I, I think it really, from the board's perspective, that would be my opinion. I can't see how we can't, how we can move forward without getting an, uh, really a baseline established. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments?
Yeah, I agree with Jerry, Mr. Chairman, uh, that would be the appropriate direction.
Any of the board members haven't spoke yet? Anything they'd like to add?
This is member Galvin. Um, I just, I first just wanted to add that, um, I live on Princeton Boulevard and I'm on that street, um, quite often several times a week. So I understand the neighborhood concern. But I did want to say, um, I, I know Natasha spoke today, um, but I'm reading through her responses over the last week and over the last couple of months. I would be in support of the project if the client would be open to, um, implementing a traffic monitoring program, um, incrementally. So whether that's three months, six months, one year, two years, um, and then mitigate, uh, traffic, uh, if they find that there is a big increase. Um, the reason I'm saying that, uh, is because I think that, you know, they've noted that it's less than a two percent increase in traffic. Um, and also because it's an existing, like we've said, it's an existing building. Um, and it's not new construction. There are currently tenants in there, um, and there's no change in the footprint of the building. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Janice. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, again, just one last time, um, I don't want to be a dead horse, but in two years, there's going to be fourteen dispensaries in this general area. Um, and the traffic will be dispersed, um, and it's going to come down. And I am no expert on the marketing of dispensaries and how they do their business. I will tell you that right now off the top. But I gotta believe, you know, whoever is going to have the shiniest tool at the end of the day, regardless of location, is probably going to get, you know, the biggest customer draw.
Yeah, but also I know, um, location, location and traffic, low traffic makes a difference. I'm the biggest draw, so we understand that. So I'm going to get back to see if I can finish with the board members. I know you spoke, you've spoke at least six times now and I'm still waiting to have them to board members.
This is member Pan. Yeah, I, I, I don't have anything else to add. I think a lot of the stuff has been covered already regarding traffic.
Caleb? Yes, um, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
I think I, I agree with the rest of the board that traffic remains, uh, I think the key issue. I acknowledge the applicant, uh, addressing the parking issue by, uh, by making an agreement with the neighbors. So, I wouldn't be too concerned with parking if, if the parking generations, uh, exceeds the, uh, the current capacity, I'm sure the applicant can, you know, will have leeway to, to address that as well. And, uh, I also acknowledge the, um, applicant addressing, uh, the dumpster screening, uh, and also some water, addressing a some water requirement. And, uh, regarding traffic, I, I would defer to the traffic engineers to, uh, to determine a, a, the best way to determine the actual impacts that, that will be generated with this, um, proposal development. With a note that I want to, um, uh, make that, uh, the applicant might, might have to consider some way to mitigate like, uh, traffic in a, uh, with the existing heavy traffic already on Westward street, um, if, if the generation happens to, you know, the traffic generation happens to be high, uh, there might be, uh, uh, more significant restrictions on, on, on the, or mitigation measures required, uh, of, of, from, from the development. So I just want to make that note that, uh, once we have the numbers, then, then we can, we can discuss further on that.
Okay, thank you, Caleb.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have one question for Mr. Cram. So I know as indicated and was brought up earlier and either Mr. Dirk mentioned it, that the prior traffic study was seven hundred and three cars and now it's down to five eighty-two. Could you tell us how that changed, please?
Yeah, it was because the previous study had a slightly larger retail area, um, in the traffic study than is what we currently have now. That's why the different, that's why the numbers came down.
Okay, so you use the more with the four thousand square foot projection areas than the twenty-three hundred?
Correct. We used the four thousand square foot gross area, but for the trip generation numbers, we used the twenty-three hundred square foot. Previous traffic study had a slightly higher retail area number than the twenty-three hundred. That's why you had a slightly higher number than five eighty-two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, so, what's the request of the board at this time?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess, uh, to, uh, put this in a form of a motion, uh, I would, um, continue the hearing until the, uh, and I guess I would defer to the city's traffic engineer with D P D. Uh, I believe it looks like we have, we have a meeting scheduled for September twenty-fourth as well. Or in September, I don't know if September tenth is too soon. That's next week. Would September twenty-fourth or October fifth work best? Natasha, I would defer to you on, on what you feel is appropriate.
So are you're asking if we can, uh, if I can determine what methodology the city prefers by that time and provide?
Yeah, and then, and then we'd have numbers based on that methodology. And then we'd have eh, whether it be a mitigation plan based on what the numbers are then.
Sure. Um, I'm sorry, did it September twenty-fourth? There's.
September twenty-fourth is a Thursday and then we have, uh, Monday, October fifth.
Um, I, it seems, September twenty-fourth seems reasonable to me to, um, make a, um, make a decision and, um, and for Mr. Dirk to get all the numbers to Mr. Cram. And, but I, I guess I would ask the applicant if, if, you know, if they can be ready.
That's going to be the next, yeah. The next ask at this point.
That's your job, sorry. That's your job, sorry.
So to that point, uh, 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 and I guess Attorney Theodore, I guess you're going to defer to the traffic engineers. But does that, uh, does that appear to be adequate time?
Yeah, we, you know, we definitely would like some guidance on this when, uh, when, when the information that Patriot Care was based upon in retail space, there's, there's definitely, you know, uh, some issues here. I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I don't see how dense storage space creates trips. Uh, I can't see that, but there must be a theory behind it. Um, so we certainly would like to have some, some, some guidance on this. Uh, and there's other alternatives that, you know, we may want to explore, but certainly guidance on traffic and trip generation, uh, something that we can have a formula to put together for the board, I think is something that, you know, I think it's a very good suggestion.
Well, and, and not even just for this application. This isn't going away. Unfortunately or fortunately, however you feel about these facilities. Uh, unfortunately or fortunately, the voters have spoken and now we have to deal with the consequences. Uh, and the city of Lowell is going to be dealing with some others. Uh, and, uh, I think it's important for us to establish, uh, some sort of a standard, especially where there really isn't a, uh, a, a national standard that, uh, appears to be applicable. So, um, so would September 24th seem to work for your client as well?
Ken, do you think that you'll be able? Okay. There's the answer.
Okay. And Mr. Dirk, well, is that something in, in, um, you know, this is a pet peeve of mine. As you know, Mr. Dirk, you've been before us and you've done some great work for the city of Lowell and peer review. But I really take exception with traffic reports and traffic studies being presented the day before a hearing. Uh, that does not sit well with me. It never has and it never will. Um, so is that going to be appropriate time for you to communicate with the other traffic engineers?
It absolutely is. I will make that commitment to you, um, Mr. Shet.
You know, I'm consistent with that, Mr. Dirk, right? You've, you've, you've stood there and heard me, uh, say the same thing to other traffic engineers, so.
A- absolutely, and nor do I, you know, appreciate receiving things the night before a hearing as well. So, um, I, I completely agree with you and I agree with, um, Mr. Cram as well in terms of trying to react to something that you just received. Because I'm sure he has other things to do during the workday than try to review, you know, a letter that comes in last minute for him as well. So I will make that commitment to you that anything I submit that is for your consideration, I will be provided at least a week in advance of that.
Very good. Thank you. In that case, Mr. Chairman, again, I, uh, make the motion to continue the matter until the, uh, September 24th meeting.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Uh, second.
Oh, Mr. Malovich, that's, that's you, right? Ms. Malovich, second matter? Yeah, all board, all members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairman, chairman vote yes. And any opposition? Hearing none. We, uh, we are continued after two hours and 10 minutes of presentation. Um, and we'll be moving along. Good luck and thank you very much all for your input. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Give us like two minutes here to put my paperwork back in order for the next meeting, for the next, uh, uh, agenda meeting? Okay, moving along on the agenda. The next matter on our agenda is a special permit for 414 Broadway Street, 51-55 Willie Street. Ryan Rourke is seeking special permit approval to convert the above address into a three-family home and construct three townhouses at the above address on 5155 Willie Street. The properties are in the urban mixed-use zoning district and the use requires a special permit approval under section 12.1C and any other relief required by the Lowell zoning ordinance. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Murphy, I represent, uh, Ryan Rourke, the petitioner in, uh, in this matter. Uh, we are seeking, uh, special permits, as you said, to maintain the existing three-family uh, at 414 Broadway Street and on an adjacent lot to construct three townhouses. We have previously appeared before the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals uh, seeking variances, uh, relative to this development for frontage and for parking requirements. And we have re, uh, we have received those approvals by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, and they have attached certain conditions, uh, to that approval that we incorporated into the plan, uh, that has been updated and submitted to the planning board, uh, for your approval this evening. Our engineer is available here this evening to discuss any detailed aspects, but I would just like to point out a couple of, um, salient points that I think, um, relate to this project. First of all, prior to the, this development, there was no off-street parking relative to 414 Broadway Street. Now, as part of this development, we are going to be providing five off-street parking spaces relative to 414 Broadway Street. In addition to that, with the construction of the three, uh, townhouses, we are going to be providing six off-street parking spots for, um, those, uh, three townhouse units. So I think we have done a great job in providing off-street parking that didn't exist prior to this development. Uh, the updated plan that we have provided to you shows that the suggestions of the Zoning Board of Appeals have been incorporated into this plan. First of all, the parking has been rotated, uh, so that, um, in compliance with, uh, uh, member, um, members' suggestions is that the parking spaces would be safer, um, the way that we have now rotated them. Secondly, the snow storage island is removed. And now there's not going to be an island. There's going to be a striped area. And I think the important thing to think about when we talk about this snow storage removal is that the stormwater suggestions of our engineer and that have been suggested also by the city uh, now shows and we're going to accept the condition that the stormwater team has suggested, there's going to be no runoff whatsoever to the adjoining lot that Mr. Jankis has asked about. And our engineer will go into that further, but the stormwater, uh, runoff has been, um, has been alleviated and that there's going to be no negative impact whatsoever to the adjoining lot. And finally, we have added a handicapped ramp and a striped crosswalk at the intersection of, uh, Broadway and Willie Street, which, um, the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals has asked us, uh, to make part of our, uh, development. And we are going to add that handicapped ramp and the, uh, striped, um, crosswalk from Broadway to Willie. After we appeared at the Zoning Board of Appeals, we appeared at the Historic Board, uh, as part of this process. And the Historic Board reviewed our proposal. Uh, they have made search, certain suggestions, uh, to the construction of these units. And I just wanted to, uh, point out to the board is that the, uh, just some comments from Steve Stoll and the Historic Board as part of our approval of this project is that the, um, the pro-proposed project is consistent with the review standards of the Acre Neighborhood District. In particular, section 3.1, new construction, general principles and 3.2 infill structures. So the Historic Board has, uh, approved our, uh, design of our buildings and has issued a historic permit, uh, for us to record at the Registry of Deeds. I know it was sent to Jared Alves today and it's on its way, um, in the mail for me to record at the, uh, Registry of Deeds. So, um, I think, uh, this is a, uh, is a good, uh, development. Uh, we are providing, uh, more off, off-street parking, which is a big issue for the neighbors in that area. And, uh, based upon the fact that the Zoning Board of Appeals has approved this project and that the Historic, uh, Board has approved this project, uh, we are asking that the, uh, Planning Board, uh, issue the special permits so that we can proceed with this, uh, proposal, which we think is in the best interests of the, um, of the Acre Neighborhood. Uh, our engineer, Kenneth Lanier, is available for any, uh, detailed, uh, questions relative to, uh, the project. And, uh, that's a brief overview and I, I look forward to hearing any questions, uh, of the board.
Thank you, Council. So is Ken going to speak or just answer questions?
Ken, are you? I am here. Yes, Mr. Murphy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Kenneth Lanier, Conestown Land Associates, representing, uh, Ryan Rourke on this application as well. Um, I can speak briefly, really just to, uh, some of the concerns that Mr. Jankis had raised in his letters regarding the drainage. Um, concern was raised in that letter primarily just about any additional stormwater flow that was added to the rear portion of the adjacent site at 420 Broadway Street. Um, we did our, um, best in designing this for, uh, Mr. Rourke to ensure that we were not going to exasperate any drainage problems for the abutting parcels. In doing so, we provided curbing, um, on the, uh, rear of the parking area for 414 Broadway Street, um, while we were adding those, uh, three additional spaces to the rear of that structure. Um, drainage would be captured in a closed drainage system that would consist of a catch basin that would, uh, outlet into an underground detention retention facility, uh, that would infiltrate into the ground. I believe that we designed that, uh, for a measure of a 25-year storm. The city review asked for a five-year, um, storm retention. Um, and I believe that we had an overflow to that system going over into 420 Broadway Street that would have only actually placed flow into that rear yard on a 50-year or a 100-year storm event. Upon review by the City of Lowell Stormwater Team, uh, they had suggested, and I look considerably favorable upon this, uh, suggestion that we would tie that overflow into the city, uh, drainage system that exists on Willie Street. And you can see that catch basin on the site plan, uh, right to the northeast, uh, closest to the intersection of Willie and Broadway. We actually had a stipulation in the Zoning Board of Appeals approval that would require us to repair some areas along that sidewalk, take out some vertical granite curving and add some, um, entrance, uh, off of Willie Street. And while doing that work, uh, I think that it'd be, uh, very simple for us to redirect the overflow, um, which was shown originally going to the rear yard of 420 Broadway Street, uh, over into that existing catch basin. So, uh, I was glad to receive that review from the city. Um, I hope that Mr. Jankis is, uh, satisfied, uh, with us coordinating with the city to ensure that there will be no, I mean, primarily at this point, there'll be almost a zero runoff um, into the rear yard of the adjacent property at 420 Broadway Street. Um, in addition, um, as Attorney Murphy had pointed out, uh, I just wanted to raise one additional item. Um, the property traffic flow, um, will be entering on Willie Street and exiting onto Broadway Street. So that is going to be a one-way traffic pattern, uh, that would allow access to the three units, uh, the new condominiums as well as to the five spaces that are associated with the off-off-street parking of 414 Broadway Streets three-unit building. So, um, just wanted to shed some light on that drainage aspect. I think, uh, Mr. Murphy had addressed all the other items. I'd be glad to answer any additional questions at this time, Mr. Lanier.
Um, Ken, could you just go over how, how you changed the parking on the plans since the ZVA plans have submitted?
Absolutely. So originally on the ZVA plans, the parking for the area to the rear of 414 Broadway Street was actually, um, going north-south and it was tucked in, um, closest to the property to the rear at 5961 Willie Street. Uh, there was a little bit of a concern there about vehicles backing up with the potential of, uh, hitting the deck area. Um, so what we did as a suggestion of Mr. McCarthy on the Zoning Board of Appeals is we rotated those spaces so that they're at an angle and they're facing now the side yard or to the west of the property at 420 Broadway Street. And that area would then allow these vehicles to back up into the one-way aisle and exit out on Broadway. In addition, another suggestion by Mr. McCarthy was to remove the original island for snow storage adjacent to the 5961, uh, southern property and just stripe that area to which gives those three spaces some additional room to just back out of that without having to be, uh, maneuvering too, uh, tightly in that parking area. So that was really the change that was modified and we also installed some concrete bollards along the existing deck and stairwell for the egress to that three-unit building to ensure some, uh, additional protections to ensure that, you know, there's no, uh, removal of that deck system. Uh, to keep that life safety available for that structure.
Thank you, Ken.
Absolutely.
Anything further from the applicant before I turn, turn it over to the public or?
No, that's, that's, that's excellent.
Okay, thank you, Council. All right, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project. Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition?
Uh, Dave Wulet. Hello?
Yeah, hello.
Hi, how you doing, Mr. Chairman?
Good, Dave. How are you tonight?
I'm Dave Wulet, uh, I'm talking as President and Founder of the Acre Neighborhood Group Action. I live at 113 Cabot Street. And the only reason I'm here is just because the neighborhood had some concerns and I see that some of them have been addressed. And I know that they are still out there at the first zoning meeting. I heard them say somebody had mentioned that they had neighborhood approval and I don't know who they had talked to because, um, um, the neighbors came up to me after that was said and asked me about it. I said, I didn't even know about the project, so I, there was no neighborhood approval that I knew of. And Mr. Hang and the, the other abutters are all, uh, coming forward and they'll probably be talking tonight. So that's the only reason why I'm here is just to, uh, just talk until the neighborhood trends are issued. I'm not in approval to the concerns of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Have a good night. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Jay Lee and I am on the board of the Common Ground Development Corporation. I'm here today, uh, representing the board and, uh, Common Ground, the abutter to this, uh, proposed, uh, project. Uh, also on this Zoom, uh, call tonight is Mr. Bill Lipschitz. He's the Director of Real Estate Operations, uh, for, uh, for Common Ground. And unfortunately, uh, Mr. Jankis, who was referred to a couple of times today, who is the Director of Real Estate Development for Common Ground, is at another, um, uh, planning board meeting and he was unable to make, uh, this particular meeting. And so I'm the, uh, I'm the, I drew the short straw yesterday to speak.
Well, we do have Mr. Jankis' letters here, so they are in, 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 in the record, okay?
So that makes it. That's great. That's great.
They'll go in as an exhibit as well. Yeah.
Thank you. And then, and, and Common Ground is not here tonight to speak in opposition necessarily uh, to the proposed density of the number of units, anything of that sort. Uh, just to express our concerns here. Now, when I heard Attorney Murphy early talk about the creation of essentially 11 new spaces, five for the, uh, 414 space, six for the, for the new construction, the three townhouses. And with 11 new spaces in the back of, uh, the, uh, the residences here, uh, with the creation of, uh, by, by our rough calculation, 6,000 to 7,000, uh, additional square footage of, uh, impervious surface here. The concern is obviously the drainage, as, as was pointed out earlier. I have a question about, about the drainage plan. I have a question about about the drainage plan. I I do uh understand that curbing is proposed. I'm not sure how how tall the curbing is that is proposed. I know there's a sort of some broken-down areas in that uh in that uh property line between four-fourteen and four-twenty, the Common Ground property. There's a a tree that's actually uh grown in the middle of uh some fencing. Uh so so I'd like to ask how that's going to be addressed, that, you know, the border. I mean, it really is maybe about a two-foot difference between the two buildings that are the abutters. There are also um some concerns about uh the existence of only one catch basin servicing this entire and how that's going to uh capture all of the 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 water flow. If you look at all the uh the plans that have been submitted, we have a drop according to these plans uh of fifty-five feet at the uh the northeast corner uh down to fifty-two feet where uh the properties uh intersect. And that's a that's a big drop, three-foot drop. Everything is coming down to that corner. And it appears that there's only one overflow catch basin that's proposed that's going to run into the underground uh cell here. And so I have a question about the adequacy of that, and whether or not uh the city engineer or third-party engineer has reviewed uh the the proposed engineering drawings to see whether or not the plan as proposed is adequate to capture the water uh with with the parameters that are that are uh required here. Um and then the last thing, I guess, would be the the snow. I know that there are a couple of snow um storage areas proposed with eleven spaces back there, eleven cars potentially, um and two uh uh areas about seven hundred square foot total. I I don't know if that's adequate, Mr. Chairman. And again, I would I would invite the city's engineer and city's uh department to to take a look at that. And uh just wondering whether or not there's a backup plan, an off-site, a snow removal area that's that's potentially a Plan B in the end, in the event of a a large storm. Those are essentially uh our our thoughts in addition to uh what Mr. Johncous has submitted in a couple of emails. And I would I would ask the uh the Board to consider uh my concerns, our concerns, and as well as uh those raised in the uh emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, can can you respond to Mr. Lee's questions? We got the drainage plan and the catch basin in the snow offsite, if need be?
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Lee, thank you for your questions. I appreciate it. And uh the curbing at that location would be a six-inch curbing. And uh the one catch basin in that corner collecting, in your estimation, six thousand square feet, is sufficient for collection of stormwater up to a twenty-five-year storm event. That is a less than two cubic feet per second of stormwater flow entering into that catch basin. So engineering-wise, it is sized appropriately. Um as was required by the City of Lowell, they had requested us to only handle a five-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. We've actually designed the system, Mr. Lee, to handle up to a twenty-five-year uh twenty-four-hour storm event onsite without any overflow onto your property, as was the original design. And I'm not sure if you heard um my previous statements, but the City of Lowell Stormwater Team did in fact review the drainage was um accommodating to the design at a twenty-five-year storm event. But in an effort to ensure that we didn't place any additional burden onto your property in the larger storm events, they've suggested to allow us to tie into the catch basin on Willie Street. So there will be, in my estimation, almost no flow in any stormwater rain event onto your property from this property, regardless of the size of the amount of pavement that's being installed for the above-ground parking area. In addition to that, you did bring up a tree, so there is that tree. I I've been out there. I've surveyed the tree. It is uh, you know, gonna have to be worked around. Uh I don't think it's the intention of the applicant to take the tree out. Um but I'm sure that between you and the applicant, if that tree was requested to be removed, maybe that could be something that's worked out between the two of you folks. Ultimately, the grading on the site in the proposed condition works from Willie Street to the catch basin in the rear of the structure at four-fourteen. And that actually has raised that up to an elevation of fifty-three. So there is about an extra foot added on to that rear area that would have to be graded down to your site. But again, as I had stated, we're putting in a six-inch curb along that whole length of that parking area adjacent to your parcel, as well as adjacent to the rear of the existing building at four-fourteen. As I didn't want there to be any water damage to any of the existing deckwork on the back of it of four-fourteen Broadway Street or any of the drainage trying to sneak its way between those two existing buildings. So we've captured all that. The overflow for that system, again, will be rerouted from the rear of your parcel into the existing catch basin on Willie Street. Snow removal, you know, I think it it's a congested area. It's it's a it's a tight spot for everybody in that neighborhood. Ultimately, regular storm events would utilize the snow storage areas, um you know, and there would have to be a uh condo association uh associated with this development that would have a snow plowing contract. And that would also be outlined in that snow plowing contract. And I would anticipate, just as all the rest of these uh densely populated uh properties in the area, large snowstorm event, you know, anything over a foot and a half, two feet of snow, would obviously probably have to have all the material of snow uh removed from the site via some uh trucking. So ultimately, that's something that we would look into in the condominium documents as well. And I hope that ends. I think that's all the items you brought up, Mr. Lee, but if if I missed something, please let me know.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one follow-up question to that?
If you may, Mr. Lee.
Then thank you. Uh, Mr. Lanier, just one question as to the uh as to the sort of the eastern side of the project along Willie Street. I I do see in the drainage and grading plan that the elevation on the street is the same as the elevation in in the in the uh upper sort of northeast corner of the lot. And and my question is, would the uh rain and stormwater runoff uh from the street also come onto the property? Or do you propose any kind of a curbing along uh the property lot line there so that street water doesn't flow right into the driveway and down into that same catch basin?
Uh, yep. So there's an existing curb line along Willie Street there, Mr. Lee, that we are going to be modifying and taking some vertical granite curving out, installing some vertical granite curving so we can bound our entrance into the property uh sufficiently. And in doing so, we're creating a berm. I don't know if it's it's kind of hard to tell on the drainage plan, but ultimately, we have a fifty-five contour right just on the inside of the curbing and the and the existing sidewalk that's there, and just on the outside into the roadway. You can see that there's a fifty-five contour. So what ends up happening there is we're going to make a small berm. So pretty much the sidewalk area between those contours would be fifty-five point five, let's call it. So that any of the roadway drainage would just stay on the gutter of the road line and into that catch basin that actually has a rim elevation of fifty-four point fifty-eight. So the roadway drainage is intended to stay in the road, and the driveway drainage is intended to stay in the driveway and hit that catch basin, which has a rim of fifty-two seventy-five.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Yes, how you doing?
Yes, hello. Just state your name and address on the record, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Anibal Fontan. As I live at fifty-eight, which is pretty much right across the street from this proposal. Um, once again, I'm not against anything going there. I would like to see something go there. It's a big empty lot. It's just a big property going up there. My, like I said, my biggest concerns are parking. I know you guys saying eleven. But no, comes snow time, it's down to ten, maybe nine. Those people are going to park on the street, which is going to take parking away from everybody else in the area. Second concern being is uh trash removal. Is there going to be a dumpster? Is it going to be public? Where are they going to park those barrels if it is public? And then pickup days, obviously, people are going to park on the street, so they might be blocked. How is that going to be addressed? Another problem is a few years back, uh they were going to put a pole in front of my house, which um I went to a meeting and it was turned down, which I was happy about. Regarding power in this area, there was a lack of power. Has anybody looked into that and addressed that issue? And um I want to say that's probably about it. I mean, parking is the biggest of everything in the area. And being there's a bunch of businesses in the area now, and everybody uses off-street parking and I think it's just gonna it's gonna kind of screw things up around here even more than what they are, especially around the wintertime, where everybody's scavenging for parking and looking for stuff. So those are my biggest concerns, and I've I've been a resident in the area for about thirty years plus, own my home for about twenty-seven. So, you know, like I said, I'm not against something going there. I just want something that's right. And I feel this project's just a little too big for what's there. Wish I would just maybe build two. Um but I guess that's not uh financially feasible to the owner of the building or who wants to build. But, you know, hopefully uh you guys come up with a good decision and benefits us, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Ken, could you say something to the question on the trash removal, please?
Uh, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as we did in the Zoning Board of Appeals uh meeting, we expressed that the trash will be of uh barrel-style pickup. Um barrels will be put out uh to the right of four-fourteen Broadway Street and to the left of Unit One for the condominiums on trash day pickup. And we are proposing that the condominium documents will require that all residents in both structures, be it the new condominium units or the existing three-unit building, uh store all barrels inside after collection.
Thank you.
In addition, for the power concern, uh Mr. Rourke has already updated the power from the existing pole on Broadway Street uh for the three-unit building at four-fourteen Broadway Street. And in doing so, was told that there is sufficient power for the condominiums from that same pole location, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, good evening. I'm John Sumas, sixty-two Willie Street. I'm doing the area. I lived here all my life. I have a pretty good history of it. I remember when that building in that lot there that it was vacant, burnt down in June of seventy-eight. And um in in essence, um I saw it in a Saturday night burn. And the person that owned the three family wound up buying that vacant lot. So technically, you can't really say the three family had no parking. That lot was their parking. So they parked there. They didn't always, everybody didn't park there, but they probably could have put ten cars there if they needed to. So that was not a problem with the people in that three-family house were not a problem for the parking, because that lot was their parking. Even though it was a different address, it was still the same owner. I don't know. I got a notice for this for this meeting a couple of weeks ago. When they had the one back in June, I didn't get a notice on it for June twenty-second. I don't know what the procedure is for it. I didn't get a card. My neighbor had told me about the meeting. And then do they publish afterwards in the newspaper? When when the meeting is, and do they, is that is that the protocol? How does it work?
Yes, I'll let Jared uh plan it, like explain it, but it does go in the paper, but it does go to media bodies. So the one in June, I don't think it talked about a planning board meeting, were you, sir?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That was the Board of Appeals.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Because I know um this one's been in the paper, because I skimmed the paper to look both myself. If you notice, my name's on the bottom. It's like, I always catch that. But yeah, so basically, the bodies should usually get a mailing list, as well as it usually runs in the paper. What's it, Jared? Two, two, two different times?
Yes, it has to run in the paper twice.
Twice, right. A minimum of twice, yeah, twice. Okay, yeah. So I'm not sure what happened on the ZBA. I can't speak for them, but for this one, I know it's been in the paper and um then it was advertised, yeah. And so then the bodies should have got a legal notice. I can't speak for the ZBA. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, well, what what actually happened was the June twenty-second meeting, they had they published it in July in the paper, July seventh and July fourteenth, after the meeting was over. So that is a, that's a problem to me, you know what I mean? When you're having a meeting and it's probably if not with this board, I'm just mentioning it. And also, if you see the
I gotta understand your frustration.
Well, if you see the sign up that they put up there, right, it it has the meeting as being Wednesday instead of Thursday. Like, how do you make those kind of mistakes? And how do you just put Wednesday instead of Thursday? Is that to deceive the public or what? I don't know. I'm just mentioning it. This, I've been in front of this four to four. You're very fair.
Yeah, I think it had the right date, though, right? But the wrong day, is that what it was on the sign?
Yes, they had the day wrong. They had Wednesday.
But they had the date right. Yeah, yeah, okay. Because I know you, I know you're here for the last meeting, and that's when I said the sign wasn't appropriate, and that's why you brought it to it. They they just had the advertisement sign, so that's why we had to continue to perfect the notice for the neighbors. Because I went up there, took a picture of it, and then Mr. Feshad also took a picture of it, and that's when we notified the app, notified the applicant. But they said they had this signed up in the past, but this one just didn't make it up for some reason, so that's why, obviously. And I know you online last time for the last meeting, because I I saw you and uh Mr. Fontan is. And I think I I think we asked to answer a couple of your questions, if my memory serves me correctly. And uh but yeah, so that's why we went to make sure that was correctly done, so.
All right, thank you very much. I haven't seen the updated plan with the parking. I just had the old one. I I didn't, I don't think there's any green space, is there? Is there any green space on the job? Is there any kind of grass anywhere?
I'll let Kenny into that. Ken, you want to answer that? Can you agree in an open space?
Absolutely, Mr. Sumas. How are you, sir? There is green space proposed for the property. Uh, there's a decent portion of green state space associated with four-fourteen Broadway Street um coming out of where the back deck is and for about eight to ten feet on the right side of the structure. And then there are two green space islands that um define the driveways for the three condominium units. One coming out of Unit One and one coming out of Unit Two. The remainder of the green space is just on the edge of the exterior of the property line adjacent to the rear parcel and also four-twenty Broadway Street. It's very limited in size. It's only three feet uh in width. But uh we do have green space close to the buildings as best as we could to ensure that we could make the traffic pattern and parking work. We did remove one island of green space at the request of the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow for the parking flow um and access to the parking spaces to the driveway uh uh a much safer and traffic pattern that was originally proposed. So uh we fills out the green space we provided, does uh meet the regulations, and um we'll hopefully, you know, beautify the system, the uh property a little bit for you.
Right. Do we have a landscape plan, or do we, we don't have one? I don't know who should answer that question, but
I'll let Kenny into that.
Thank you.
Kenny, has a question about a landscape plan?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it on mute. I apologize.
He had a question about a landscape plan.
Absolutely. So we provided a note um regarding the landscaping on the site plan, but ultimately, the condition of the Zoning Board of Appeals decision was that the applicant or, you know, contractor building this would uh work with the DPD prior to obtaining any certificate of occupancies for the units or the building and uh provide an updated plan at that time to be constructed before the COs are issued.
Is there a percentage that they have for green spaces? It's, you know, you say you have a little bit, you eliminated some. What's the numbers? I don't know.
Yeah, in this particular zone, there is no requirement for green space.
Now, other, getting to the barrels, are they located along the three-family house to the left of the of the meters? Is that where they're going to be? There's twelve, there's going to be twelve barrels there. For um six green ones and six maroon ones. Are those going to be to the left of the of the electrical meters or no?
That is correct, yep. So to the right side of, so if I'm facing the rear, uh so if I'm standing in the rear of the structures facing Broadway Street, it'll be the to the right side of Broadway Street, four-fourteen, where the electrical meters are now. And then it'll be to the left side of Unit One.
Are they all going to be lined up, all twelve barrels together?
So the barrels, the barrels are going to be required to be stored inside. They're only allowed to be put outside for pickup on actual trash day pickup.
So they won't be on the property during the week, only one day a week?
That is correct, sir.
Well, I had mentioned with the um Board of Appeals that if you looked at all four corners of Willie Street and Broadway Street, three out of the four have angles in the on the corners, you know, which it's a it's a bad intersection for 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 accidents and traffic. And I know this one didn't have that. I I thought to make it look symmetrical, I had mentioned to them to maybe have an angle on this one, too. So they all look the same, or so they all, it'd be easier for vision. I I don't know what happened with that. I, when I had to zoom on the Board of Appeals, I get one shot and I don't get to speak after that. So that I mentioned it. On the board of appeals, I get one shot and I don't get to speak after that. So that I mentioned it and I don't know what became of it. I don't I don't know.
I get criticized a lot for letting people speak too often, but I admit well, that's one of them. So.
Well, God gave us two ears and one mouth.
Well, I hear you.
I'm asking about the angles, you know, the angle on each side. And that one looks like it's square. It's not an angle. I don't know.
Let Kenny answer how that is, how that on the plan.
Yeah, so that three unit structure, um the way that the architect had designed that and we worked it out with the historic board for approval of the building because this is, you know, the acre historic area. Um there is no proposed angle on unit three. We tried to keep all the units consistent and it was approved by the historic board. So What you see on the plan is what the plan is to construct.
That's it on that, right?
Yes.
All right. Wait, they mentioned in the zoning appeals, an attic attic window and attic space that you have in the plan. Um it's second stairs going to the top floor. It says on the plan not to be slept in, right? Which we're not gonna do bed checks, right? And my feeling is, all right, here's why. Here's how you eliminate, I put in in the letter of aid. Here's how you eliminate bed checks and how you eliminate a bedroom. Take the window out of the attic. Then you won't. Then you know no one's sleeping there. If you eliminated the window, Then for sure, otherwise, like Dennis said, it'll be a three bedroom, students could move in, whatever, you know, in essence, it is a bedroom, but They're calling it a flex room, whatever that meant. I thought it'd be an office or something. They described the wood as a flex room. So that was a new one to me. But my feeling is eliminate the window and then you don't even have an issue what kind of room it is. That would be my thought if they if the board can consider that. And then you know, down the line, if they want to put an illegal bedroom there, what they'll do is they'll put the window on the weekend. And when you see a window up there, then you know it's a bedroom. That's that's my thought on that. I I see a problem eliminating the window, but you know it's gonna be a bedroom if it's, you know, if it's got a window in it and stairs are going up. And and it do advertise as having it two bedroom condos. That is the third bedroom. You know, it's gonna get finished otherwise. Would they eliminate that windows? That's something that It is possible or just that way? You know, it's not gonna be better. No one's gonna sleep in the bedroom without a window. Maybe.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could answer that, I mean, I I know that the applicant worked with the historic board on that specific design. I wasn't As involved with that building review as I was with the site plan design, so I can't speak to whether that was a requirement that the historic board had asked for or not. Um but I believe that, you know, if the window's there, it was probably something that was discussed at the historic board. Um I'm not entirely sure. Maybe Mr. Lockhart might be able to uh Uh address that um as he was also on the historic board, but um ultimately, you know, I I think if if it needed to be there, that's the reason it was shown. I'm not sure.
We could, or a condition that, you know, we can eliminate it. Is that possible? Because you know it's gonna be a bedroom. I mean, even though it says in the plan not to be slept in, who puts that in the plan anyway? Not to be slept in in parentheses, you know?
Put it in my driveway.
I'm sorry?
You put that in my driveway somewhere, right?
Yeah.
No one pulls in. Mr. Lockhart, do you remember on the historic board if there's an issue on that um window up there? If you recall anything?
I wasn't, I wasn't present at that meeting, but that that would be have been covered by Steve and Whatever architect he had to evaluate the plans. But he would be the one that would have to really answer that. I don't know the detail on that, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a bad request on my part to eliminate the window? Is it something that that way you know it's not gonna be a bedroom? Then it becomes a three bedroom condo and more people, more everything, you know? Yeah, just a thought. I don't know. I'll leave it up to the board to think about it anyway. Just.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Yeah. I can I can understand your concern. I understand.
Yeah. Another thing is the sidewalk on Willie Street. It's in pretty tough shape. It's they they have a an area that When that big block building burnt down in seventy eight, there was an area about four feet wide that they used to roll the beverages down, the the kegs down the basement. And it's all irregular. It's everything. I I suggested they did the whole sidewalk over. There's two, there's two curvings there on Willie Street. Twenty four feet long. One of them's twelve, one's eleven. Maybe we go down to the twelve one, twelve foot one and eliminate the other. The other one was like half on, half off. It's It's sort of sort of both. If we can straighten that out and they be paved the sidewalk, what good is having handicap if if the people can't roll?
Mr. Sumas, uh just so you're aware, we're re locating the outlet structure for the proposed drainage system. And my intention, albeit it's not shown on the plan that's before the planning board today, but ultimately will be a condition, hopefully of the approval Would be that this drainage system will connect to the existing catch basin at the intersection there of Willie Street and Broadway Street. So ultimately, that would more than likely be installed under the sidewalk area for that connection. So it'd be my belief on the plan. I will note that any sidewalk in that distance between the entrance of Willie Street To the connection of the catch basin would have to be replaced to city standards.
They would pave it or whatever they think is.
Absolutely. Whatever this, whatever the engineering department would require them to do upon replacement.
Very good. Um, okay, getting back to the elevation of the rear back of the the bottom part of the building, right near the back of four fourteen. There's the old chambering fence there. It's at the bottom. That elevation is forty inches different than Willie Street, forty inches. I'm not a surveyor. I'm not an engineer, but I I measured it in in a different way. So what would be the plan To eliminate that hill from possibly the water going To C T I's property? What would be the thought on that? Are you gonna put, you said you're gonna put a retention with with probably a chamber or something? But you're still gonna have an inclined hill, right? The parking, the cars aren't gonna be parking there anymore. Is that? I didn't know that till tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I could answer that. We're we're gonna be dropping the parking. So I I know that the rear of the parking looks pretty level um as it is now, and then it sharply drops off down from Pretty much where the old property line was between the two parcels. But what we're doing is we're regrading the lot So that we have a consistent two percent slope from Willie Street to the proposed catch basin at the corner Of the, I guess, westernmost side of the property line. So we're gonna have a two percent area. There won't be any hill drop in that area. Um and the water will flow into that catch basin. And the reason we're adding that fill is so that we can't put that underground system in for the drainage. So It will actually appear fairly flat, a two percent slope in a parking area is pretty flat. Um so you won't have that hill um or drop off and two feet over, I believe it's about ninety five feet From Willie Street to the catch basin location. That's a two percent slope.
Are you gonna raise that grade where it's forty inches lower? Is that grade gonna be raised up with with the old chain link fences? You understand why me?
I where the old chain link fence between those two properties. That's actually been removed now, right? So there used to be an old chain link fence between the two properties. Nope.
Chain link fence is still there. It's the boundary between.
Yep, yep. So that one, that one's still there. We're not changing that. We're actually, that's all just gonna stay that. That's, I mean, I I don't know if the applicant is gonna be changing that fence or not. Uh that's up to the applicant. I didn't propose to do so in the site plan. Um but ultimately, that chain link fence, the tree that's there, those would remain. And we would come three feet off of that property line, raise it up about one foot and then put in a curb in that area to collect that stormwater.
So you'll still have maybe a three foot height difference, right, between Willie Street and there? Am I wrong or?
Uh two foot. Yes, sir. Two foot height difference.
Yeah, because I know it's forty inches now between the bottom of that and Willie Street is forty inches. Plus, I might miss an inch.
I would a hundred percent agree with you. So if you want a survey job, I'd be glad to hire you.
No, I didn't. That's the next issue, right?
Yeah.
They have that old chain link fence that I'm talking about that's on not four fourteen, the building next to it. The I I don't know what number it is. It's you know, the old chain link fence we just discussed.
Yep, four twenty.
Yeah, four twenty. Okay, good. Someone took that fence when they did it, maybe sixty years ago, because it's all rotted and it's all rusted and everything. Somebody took it and went from the corner of four twenty And just lined it up with the tree. So I would like to see and get that surveyed. I don't even know if that fence is in the right spot. You know, it probably isn't.
I mean.
Because someone put, you, someone used the tree as a pole. And I'm sure sixty years ago, that tree was six inches in diameter. And now it's eighteen inches in diameter and the tree is actually wrapped around the fence. So I don't even know. Like I said, whose land that might be, Savannah wise, it might be yours. It might be um might be four twenties. I don't know.
Yep. So we so we surveyed the property and that chain link fence is one foot into our property.
Into your, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Listen, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna last as long as the previous meeting there, which took everybody's time.
Thank you, sir.
Well, okay, so there'll be no three cars in the back like we saw the initial. I have not seen the present plan. I was going by the plan we looked at Three weeks ago at the board of appeals. So there won't be any cars in the back since you have a new um a new plan set up, you know? And I'm just, I just want the project to look good. You know, look, I'm construction for two years. I know sometimes things look good on paper and then when you bring them in the field, it doesn't happen. And when it happens in the field, some foreman's gonna make a decision. And if they're not gonna be around for long, they're gonna make that decision based on money. And someone's gonna, the people that buy the house or the neighbors wanting to get hurt by it, and the building winds up long gone, hard to find, see ya. So I just wanna make sure I get it done right. I would like two units there. That would be great. A great project. I think tree three is like cutting it all close. I think it's like I I described it as being six gallons of water into a five gallon bucket, you know? And I look at it like I wish two units were there. Um I, things get compromised sometimes. That's all I'm saying. And it's not anybody's fault. Not in the field. I understand the way it works. They have to get things done. You look at, oh, it says here in the plan, you go and you do it and you make a decision on the spike. You don't call The engineer up to redraw everything. You don't make a big thing out of it. You just make a decision. It doesn't always Work out to everybody's advantage, I guess, you know? I'm not against progress. I've been in with the board here before on four things. I'm, I think we should do something with that lot. I I would think two units would be something I would want. And and like Mr. Lenny Ann said, It's not concerning. You wouldn't want no economic gain. Well, if you went with two units here, They would still approve it. They they they're still gonna stay. They're not gonna leave. They're gonna sell it. They're not gonna, they're not gonna do the work here. They're gonna sell it to someone else. And if it was two units, They would still be, you know, you wouldn't affect them just money wise, I guess, on the extra unit. But it'd be better for the neighbor with that for two units, I think. And I guess pretty much that's it. Because I have not seen the present plan, so it's hard to really think about what what got drawn up in the last three weeks. I haven't. Uh like I said, I like to have that attic window checked out as a condition to maybe say, look, I like to block that thing off because I know it's gonna be a bedroom. And we're not selling that as a three bedroom. We're selling it as a two, you know, and with the with it there is pretty much everything but drywalled in to make it a three. So If that could be done aside from that, I I just hope that everything works out good. And the board always has these tough decisions to make. And you saw the last one you just had. You had to continue. So Hope you make the right decision and and be fair to everybody. That that's my, and I think you will.
Thank you, sir.
That's it on my part. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anyone else? Anybody else on the line calling in, zooming in, whatever it is? Okay, this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any questions, comments?
Um, this member Shane, and I I think that uh can have addressed uh most of my concern and but I have to point out like Point out that the comment about the third bedroom on the on the top is that I I took a good look at the floor plan and I I I agree that uh just having Uh the language not to be used for sleeping in parentheses would not uh keep people from sleeping in in that room, since it's the biggest actually of uh all three bedrooms. So uh I I I would hate to see that room uh without window, but If we're really like looking at like uh the parking requirements for two bedroom uh unit and and also um advertisers two bedroom uh townhouses, uh that will be a concern. So uh that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just.
Go ahead.
I'll let Mr. Lockhart go first.
Okay, Mr. Lockhart?
Uh do we get a resolution on whether we have a landscape plan or not?
I think the question was, um they had to approve from the from the Z B A, but be approved by the um plan developments.
Oh, yeah, it was. Okay.
Okay, so I don't think we have one. I don't, if they have.
No, we don't have one here. Yeah. All right. No, I don't have any other issues. My main concern was the uh Um runoff into the adjacent property, and I think Ken covered that thoroughly. So I'm satisfied. I don't have any issues really. Or any additional questions?
Yeah, because we did receive a uh report today from the Low Regional Wastewater Utilities from Mr. Greg Coyle indicating um what they wanted done to make sure that the Um about the catch spaces enough and and but it was no runoff. And I think that's a lot of the stuff that Ken referred to. Uh hoping I'm speaking out to turn on that, Ken. But I think a lot of that was what you received by Mr. Coyle was uh what you did sufficiently to cover those concerns.
Right.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely.
Yeah. So you, so obviously, Ken, you gotta be, you have a copy of that from Mr. Coyle?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, and and we agree with the condition that Jared had pointed out in his D P D letter uh based on. Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, I thank you. Uh, any other board members today? I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is Member Galvin. Um I agree with Caleb's comment. I'm a little bit um Just at a little bit of a loss of how we're not calling that third story a bedroom. Um it doesn't only have one window. Uh there is a dormer there, too, so it has really three windows um in that space. So I'm I agree. I'm surprised that it's not considered a bedroom um because that would also impact the parking. Um but I also wanted to add that I do, I do think it's a nice project and I think it's an improvement to the site And good for the site and good for the neighborhood as well. Um I think there's been a lot of thoughtful response both from the applicant and also the neighbors. And I appreciate all the things that the neighbors brought up that we got to discuss Um today. The one thing that I wanted to add was I'm also um a little disappointed. I think that the front elevation is an is a really nice elevation. Um it's proportioned and there's things that uh scale it for the size because it's really like a three and a half story tall, even though there's only two, you know, two living Floors. Um it's like a three and a half story tall building. So I think that front elevation Uh is really proportioned well and scaled right. I'm a little disappointed that and that is, I just want to put out in the record That in the review of the E P D and the review of the historic board, that there weren't more elements on the street elevations, um both on Broadway Street And along Willie Street um to really scale those elevations because it's a tall building. Um and so I just wanted to add that, that I would have hoped that it would have been caught uh during the design review. Um but I just wanted to add that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Fisher.
Um First of all, I I have uh the D P D had provided in their letter to us the conditions of the zoning board of appeal. Um and I didn't see anywhere in there regarding a landscape plan. I would be Uh making that a condition. Uh we'd be looking to make that a condition of of our approval here uh this evening, if if that would be the wish of the board. Um and then also, um I think it was mentioned that would be incorporated into the condo docs, but I think it would should be made a condition that uh in the event of a major snow uh uh snowstorm that uh Uh the uh the snow would be removed offsite to prevent the loss of any parking spaces on site. And um again, it was suggested that it really is i- if um The applicant would repair the sidewalk to city standards if the engineering department um required that. I think we have to leave that up to the engineering department based on on what happens on the site. The um I, from a design perspective, that and and I know Mr. Lockhart's our representative and I think it's been pretty I've been pretty consistent over the years. I have some different opinions from from sometime with the historic board approves and uh And uh what I think uh should be done from a design perspective. I think she uh Member Galvin hit it right on the right on the nose as far as the the street elevation. I love the rear of the building or the front left perspective view. Um the idea of eliminating windows, uh Mr. Chairman, you go back to the uh The old Mother Hubbard site, right? The rhythm rhythm of the windows has a lot to do with the aesthetic look of the building. You have something of this kind of a mass. You don't have any window on that, on the, on that.
I don't, I just don't know.
On that side elevation was just.
On that side elevation was just being, just aesthetically, just terrible, I think. So, um, and it's always a challenge with these types of condos, everywhere I've ever seen them, uh, with that, that attic room not being converted into a. Bedroom as a possibility, I've actually seen condos where there's an actually walk-up attic space where you pop up the door, and they, they made that a sleeping spot for a teenager. So, uh, and how do you, how do you regulate that? Uh, that's difficult, that really is. But I think aesthetically, uh, overall, I think this is a good looking building, it's a good looking project, but I, I, I think obviously. From, uh, uh, they may have been able, uh, you know, with, with, with some bump out. Uh, on that elevation, uh. Yeah, would probably, on the other elevation, would have helped, but, uh, overall, I don't think it's a bad design. Um, it, you know, it is a, uh, it is a, um. Uh, the area where there, the, uh, the density is, has been established. Uh, I think there's more parking on site here than, than anything around there. Uh, and I like the changes, I must say, I like what the ZBA had recommended. Uh, on the site and the adjustments that were made. Uh, certainly, I would be, uh, I think it was, it was mentioned in the letter from DPD that it was. Discussed, and it was discussed here this evening as well regarding the, the, how the barrels, uh, the trash barrels would be handled. I would be looking for that to be a condition of this, uh, of this project as well, that they will be stored inside and make that a condition of approval. Um, I'm assuming some of this will be incorporated, this is what will be incorporated into the condo docks. So it will live on, uh, beyond the original, uh, construction of the project, but. Uh, overall, uh, in the, I think the drainage, obviously, we received the communication. Uh, I think the drainage has been satisfied from the engineering, uh, the city's engineering department. Obviously, that was a concern, I think anybody that looks at the elevation as it relates to, uh, the common ground property. Uh, certainly, I could understand what their concern was relative to the site. Uh, it appears from an engineering perspective that has been, uh, addressed, and certainly as DPD, uh. Uh, recommended, I, I think we would incorporate that as a condition as well, so. Uh, again, overall, I, I, I don't think it's a bad project, I, I think it's a, it's, it's nice to see something go up on that vacant lot. Um, I, I think, uh, one of the speakers had a, an interesting comment about, uh. The angle of the building at the, at the intersection, I, and I. After that was said, I looked at the pictures, and sure enough, that is true, the other buildings have the, uh. Uh, have it cut off, so it's just, uh, although I think it would have been difficult in this building to do that, uh, in, uh, in, um. Uh, not lose some of the functionality probably of, of the unit as well, so. Uh, overall, I, I, I don't think it's a bad project, and, uh, I think the ZBA did a good job, uh, with, uh, with their petition on this. And, um, overall, again, the Historic Board looked at this and, and Steve Stoll. Um, overall, it's not a bad design, I, I just, certainly the scale of that, uh, building, the height, uh, certainly, um, you know, uh. It, it, I think it will have visually, it, uh, when that goes up, uh. You know, I would have liked to have seen some elements to try to visually bring that down. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
I think we may lost the chairman momentarily.
Oh, yeah, I don't see him on the list. He is well.
He's, he's back on the list, I think he may have just had a brief connection issue.
Okay.
Chairman, I think you have still muted.
It, um. There we go, yeah, I know, I just, my connection just went off for a second, though. There we go, yeah, okay. Any other board members have any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bob.
I, uh, like the other members, I think this is a good project. The architecture of the side. With, um, sides of the building. Leave a lot to be desired. I know its functionality of what's going on inside. But, uh. I think having. Put the spaces of the parking on site. Help the neighborhood. I think pretty well it's a good project, and I have no. Real problems with, other than the architecture, but that. That was, uh. You know, the. In good hands with the Lowell Historic Board. So I will relinquish to their. Expertise.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Russell, any comments?
No, I, I think everything, um, has been covered, um, I mean, I, I feel like I should have a concerns about the conversion of that attic space into an extra bedroom, and. Um, I just don't know what sort of condition we might be able to, uh, why to address that. Um, this sort of a tough regulatory issue. Uh, but I think, I mean, generally, I think it's a good project, I think it adds housing to the neighborhood. Um, and I think it would be improvement.
Thank you. Ken, are you still with us, Mr. Lenny?
Uh, yes, I am, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Ken, um. Do you have any suggestions, you know, I, I mean, obviously, I think all the board members touched on the concern of the third bedroom. Um, do you have any suggestions on how we can help? Make sure that it happens, I know it's a policing issue, and I, you know, the neighbors brought it up, all the board members addressed it. I'm just seeing if you have, I know you put a note, no sleeping up there, uh, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, it's a, it's a tough call, I mean, you don't wanna take away the, uh, ability for, as we all know, as we're all sitting at our home in our own home offices, you know? Um, for somebody to be able to have an office on that attic floor. Um, or a, a bonus room for a play area for the kids, I know, you know, we use our basement, you know, for our kids to play, and it was great to have that additional space, so. Um, you know, obviously, you, you try to limit the use as a third bedroom, because we don't wanna invite, you know, any additional parking issues for the property. Um, but ultimately, like you said, there's, there's really not much you can do, it's, it's a flex room, and we call it a flex room, because ultimately, we wanna give the. The homeowner the ability to use it, like I said, as a, uh, storage area, as a office, as a playroom, as a game room, you know, so it, you know, it's just an extra room. It's almost like having a living room and a dining room, you know, I mean, you could make one of them a bedroom if you really wanted to, and still have a living room, you know? So.
Like same, same as you have an office in one moment, it changes to a bedroom, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you for your comments on that, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure, I mean, I'll go with Mr. Malavich, and then I'll go with Mr. Lockhart, go ahead, Bob.
Bob, um. What I was thinking is, when the building permit is issued, is issued as a, a two-family, I mean, a two-bedroom, uh, unit, is taxed as a two-bedroom unit. Um, so the taxes are based on. It being a two-bedroom condo. Now, if they had a third bedroom. And also, on there, uh, supposedly a family, I don't see, it's not gonna be rented. The homeowners association would make sure there'd be no rental. Of the. Costs. Um, so, I don't know, maybe the, uh, the tax, the assessors office could have some control over the, the third floor use.
Yeah.
That's all I'm.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Bob. Um, Mr. Lockhart? Mitch, Mitch, do you have a question? I'm sorry.
I mute myself. I don't have a question, I just think generally it's a good project.
Yeah.
Um, and, and it should be conditioned, I was just not present. When that window. Uh, was designed that way, it seems very odd to me. And I don't think, I think it was done with an architect and. Not the full board being present. I'm just not sure about it sitting here, but, uh, I think it's a good project. And we should condition it. But clarification from Steve Stoll.
Yeah, I mean.
In some words.
I mean, you know, they are looking for a special permit, so obviously, in the special permit, we could condition it as to be, remain as a two-family unit. And anything else, anything else, if they go in and put a third family in there, and obviously, you know. It's hard for the city to police it, but obviously, the neighborhood has the right to police it, and, and if we find out it's in there, then they can go in, and then the special permit can be revoked.
Right, exactly.
I don't know how else we can address it, but that's just my thoughts on that. And obviously, the applicant is coming, coming in with a two-bedroom and indicate not to be asleep in the area, so I don't think that would be detrimental to the applicant.
That makes sense, the way you worded it, yeah.
The, the chairman, if I could just comment on that. I mean, I, I don't wanna give, even a butt is a false sense of, like you addressed it, because we didn't address it. Um, it, it's, it's permitted for two bedrooms, Mr. Malavich hit it right on the head, that's the policing within the city. The special permit is to construct it, so revoke the special permit, they're not gonna tear the structure down.
No, no, but.
The policing of it is, it's, 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 it's approved and taxed as a two-bedroom. Uh, it was built as, the permit was issued as a two-bedroom, and they have to comply with the permit. As it's on file with the building department, and that's every, that's every structure in the city of all. And the reality of it is that sometimes in these, in these condos, this is what happens, it's, I, I don't like it, I don't like anybody. Uh, but I just wanna give a butt as a false sense that we addressed, because that really, it doesn't really, it's wording, it's wording as a condition. Really, anything substantive.
Yeah, that means.
Because Mr. Malavich hit it right on the head, that's the policing within the city.
Right.
Okay, do, and any further comments in the board, or what's requested of board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the project with the following conditions. Uh, first of all, to incorporate, um, the, uh. The condition A through F that were, uh, part of the zoning Board of Appeals, uh, approval. And, uh, the following conditions to be added by the planning board, uh, proposed, uh, uh, the prior, as proposed by the DPD regarding drainage. Prior to applying for a building permit, the applicant must receive approval from the city's stormwater review team by demonstrating that the site. Can detain the occurrence of a runoff for the first. Two hours of a five-year, twenty-four-hour storm and comply with the requirements outlined in an email dated September third. Twenty twenty by Gregory Cole, Staff Engineer, Waste Water Utility, to prevent overflow of runoff into the abutting properties. Next condition is that the applicant, uh, would condition that the, uh, condo documents will require residents to store their barrels inside, the, the, the trash barrels. Inside after collection. And that the, um. In the event of a major snowstorm, the, uh. The, uh, this is to be incorporated into the condo docks, as a condition is, is, uh. Uh, in the event of a major snowstorm, the, uh, they will be, uh, they will remove, uh, uh, all snow off-site. In order to prevent the loss of any parking spaces on site. Uh, also, the applicant will submit a landscape plan, uh, subject to approval by a DPD. And I will just add on that, uh, on especially densely populated areas, and, and I always point to certain communities, uh, you know, Newbury Port is one of them. You can have a structure that pretty much eats up most of the lot, but boy, depending upon how you can landscape that. You could really make something aesthetically very nice. So, uh, again, I think that's an important component, I didn't see that in the ZBA approval, it might have been discussed, but I would add it as a condition. And then also that, uh, the applicant to repair the city sidewalk to city standards if required by the city's engineering.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with several conditions, do we have a second or a discussion?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Lockhart, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye, cheer vote, cheers, any opposition? Hearing none, that special permit is approved, um. Good luck, I wish you well with the project, hopefully it comes out as nice as it, it, um, appears to be, obviously, the names have brought the issue up, that hopefully that, everything comes out as well, and. Um, thank you, Ken, and thank you, Tony Murphy, I wish you well.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate it, have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank, thank you, council. Okay, so moving along on the agenda. Um. We, and, um. I'm, I'm just gonna jump down to administrative signature. Authority. Do you wanna address that for us, Jared?
Yes.
Absolutely, uh, it's, it's been common practice that the associate planner also has signatory authority, as does Eric Legel, the Director of Development Services, and then the senior planner, myself. Um, and this is just something that we had not updated once Fran became associate planner, only, I think, because of the pandemic, and we had many, many. Other things that we were all focused on, so now that, um. We have this opportunity, we thought that it would be, you know, a good chance to take that vote.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition that, um, is allowed? Um, Jared and I talked earlier today, I know when we saw some of our communications, that City Hall is open. Two days a week, basically, now for people to come in and come out. Um, so they're gonna need our signatures for this, so I spoke with Jared, and I said, you know, if it's, if we're gonna be in the neighborhood, and if we, um, can't go into City Hall, if we can call, instead of the plan, maybe we can meet outside. So if that can work with each individual person, just so they can get their signatures on record, um, so if you're not available on, I believe it was Tuesday and Thursday. Jared told me they're open full-time, but if it's any other days, he said just call ahead of time, either himself or Fran could come meet us outside and just give our signature, that. I'll just mention that to the board members, so if you're in the neighborhood, and you wanna get your signature on there somehow, so we can get this approved. Um, we can probably do it somehow that way, if you're not available on the Tuesday or Thursday to go into City Hall.
And, and I would just advise, probably don't come tomorrow, we may not have the document ready to go tomorrow, so maybe next, starting next week.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I said, usually at a regular meeting, he'd pass it around and sign them at night, you know, like in the old days, right? And that's when you give us our updated plans for everything, but things have changed, as we know.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we've been doing this so long, you have to refer to it as the old days, that just breaks my heart, actually.
Well, yeah, so let me go back to, uh, anybody have any, um, new business or old business, or any communications from the planning board?
I just had a question about the signatures, do, do the associate members need to provide that signature if, if all the, um, regular members are present at the meeting?
Jared, I think you just need five of us, right?
Yeah, we would need, um, um, I, I think it's actually even just four of the, of the members, and at the Russell's point, uh, since you. All the full members were present tonight, it would be, um, technically the full members who voted to approve the signatory authority, so Russell and Janey would not need to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Russell, okay.
Good question.
Good question, um, so any book, anybody have any, um, new or old business to discuss?
Uh, the Historic Board has not set another meeting. September, probably because of the, uh, holiday. That's all, we haven't.
Okay. Okay, um. And A, did, did you ever start in that new committee that we had, uh, that you had appointed to, was that still, yeah?
No, I haven't heard anything about it since, uh, since I was voted in, so I'll give you an update when there is one.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
And, and I can provide a, a brief update on that, um, we are hoping to have, uh, a new position posted soon. Uh, or an assistant planner who would be staffing the Community Preservation Committee. Also helping out with the Planning Board, Zoning Board, and Conservation. Uh, and, and I'll do kind of a quick run for, uh, that group to develop regulations, uh, start. Accepting applications and hopefully make the recommendations to the council, so the projects could be funded by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, before July one, so it'll be a quick, quick, uh, turnaround once things start happening.
Okay, thank you for that. Nobody else has any updates, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Tell me.
Okay, um. Motion by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Malavich, all in favor, say aye? Motion by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, we have adjourned. What time we have? We're at 10 o'clock. Good night, everybody. Good thing we had, we broke into two meetings, huh?
Absolutely. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.